Good evening. The town council meeting for April 15th, 2014 is now called to order. Councilor Terry, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing. Today we recognize the first anniversary of the tragedy of the Boston Marathon as we're all aware. And I'd like to just take a moment to remember Lindsey Cristel, Martin, and Sean, who passed away as a result of that, and all of those other people who were injured. And also remember our heroes who were there, civilian, police, fire, medical people who contributed to their saving their lives and bringing them back into health. So if we could just have a moment of silence for those deceased as well. And before we move on, I'd like to wish a happy and blessed Passover to all of our Jewish brethren. Councilor Mayo is celebrating Passover tonight as many of our fellow citizens here in Muncher. Roll call, please, Councilor Clark.
Councilor Callow.
President.
Councilor Sanford.
Here.
Councilor Boncorie.
Here.
Councilor Verone.
Here.
Councilor Terry.
Yeah.
Councilor Boyager.
Here.
Councilor Mayo.
Vice President Davento.
Yes.
President Gill.
Present.
Thank you.
The minutes from April 1st, 2014, the meeting minutes are certainly, could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Sanford. Is there any discussion on the matter? If not, all those in favor to say aye. Opposed? General. March 18th, we discovered that a correction needed to be made on the minutes of March 18th, and we handed the correction out this evening. If they, could I have a motion to accept the correction, amend the minutes for March 18th?
Motion to accept as amended.
Motion by Councilor Verone, seconded by Councilor Boyager. Any discussion on the motion? No? All those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General. Pardon?
One abstention.
One abstention, Councilor Terry. It's been me great pleasure to recognize one of our citizens who doesn't need any recognition. We all know Richie. Richie has been a fixture in our community for many years. Richie had kind of a tough year last year, but he has come back from it, and he's back in full strength. Believe it or not, Richie is 60 years old on April 25th. So we'd like to wish Richie a happy birthday and present him with a citation from the council. Be it all known that the Winter Town Council hereby offers its congratulations to Richard Scannelli in recognition of his 60th birthday on April 25th, 2014. On behalf of the citizens of Winter, we extend our most sincere congratulations to Richie on his birthday, and best wishes in his future endeavors. Given this 15th day of April, 2014, in Winter, Massachusetts. Let's do a picture with Richie.
What? Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we'll put it that way. Okay.
Looks like you've done this before.
Yes, he's a...
Just tell us where we need to go.
Water bottles.
I do. Thank you, Council President. Tonight I have the honor of introducing our latest appointee as the Commissioner of Inspection Services, Al Weyde. His wife, Dawn Marie, is here as well. Can we welcome Al to Winter? We had many applicants for the position, and Al came out on top as the best candidate for Winter. Al has served since 2004 as Building Commissioner in the city of Chelsea, has been in the construction trades for many years, and a project manager for a number of important projects. And he brings a whole set of vision and goals and objectives for the position, and conducts his business very well. It was very, we did an extensive background check, and nothing but good comments came for Al and his work in Chelsea. So we're really pleased to have filled such an important position with someone of Al's credentials and enthusiasm, and so we're excited about the appointment. Welcome, Al.
I'm going to introduce the Airport Air Pollution and Hazards Committee. Could we let Tony have your seat? Tony is going to give us a presentation this evening on the airport pollution, air pollution in airport.
It's actually called the Noise, Air Pollution, and Airport Hazards Committee.
Sorry, I have a thought.
That's okay.
Tony Magahad.
Tony Magahad. I'm a new resident to the town from 2004. Actually, 2005 I moved here. And I saw on TV one night the Airport Hazards Committee, and I said, "Well, I want to join that. I'm a chemist, environmental chemist, air pollution work at Harvard School of Public Health, worked at Dr. DeWolfe." So I thought I could have a little fit into the town. And then tragically, we lost Brian Dumpster, who was the other scientific person, who was the one that did the famous 1999 study on Court Road, Court Park. So I'd like to introduce the committee if you don't know everybody. We have Bob Driscoll. He's been a member for a long time. Dick Bangs. Dave Phipps, who's a new member. He's an ex-airline pilot, jet pilot. He brings a new dimension to our committee. He knows all the ins and outs of the practical stuff of what's going on. And John Particuliano is here. He just came back on board, and he's sick tonight, so he wasn't able to make it. We have our meetings the Thursday of every month.
Jerry Falvo.
Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry. The vice chair. He's another, we call him a senior member. And so...
Anybody else have to say about anything about that?
So I'm going to go through this fast.
We forgot one other member, Bob DeLeo.
Bob DeLeo, yes. How can we forget Bob? He's been on the committee pretty much since it started. He's also a very influential person. Many times, people know Bob with Bishop. She sits in for him at the meetings, and she does a great job. But Bob's had a lot of influence on things going on. So that's the members. We're seeking new members. We'd like to get a seventh member, somebody that's either a scientific or political type of person, or both. And we're also looking for two junior members, preferably a political science or science major, somebody a junior or senior in high school, which would be good, because then we're sort of like getting to the point where we may need some new blood coming in, real new blood. And I'm going to hand out a mission statement. Actually, unfortunately, I don't have enough. You can see the mission statement, it's going to be revamped on the website, and I'm going to give these copies to Peter. And this is our credo. This is what we go by, how we run the system, and how we try to protect the town from the effects of the airport. So I apologize again, my Xerox machine failed. Next thing I'm going to say is, read it over, and then we're trying to update the website, and so it'll be on there, and sort of segues into the new...
Excuse me, Tony, is this what's on the website now, or are you changing it?
I'm changing it a wee bit, there's some typos.
Thank you.
So that I wanted to straighten those all out.
Okay, good.
Profession is our business. And then since 1990, 2012, we've done a couple of things. It's sort of, we've created refrigerator magnets to put on the house, people's refrigerators in the size of a business card, and what they're doing is that it has the complaint number for Massport. So some people may not have it, but if they got it right there at the refrigerator, it could, you know, give them a better chance of calling it in. Now, speaking of that, Massport has, but they're a little bit behind now. They send me the number of complaints every three months or every six months that have come into that complaint hotline. And it's, we've been trying to do statistics on them and things like that. One of the interesting things, they've sent me in some with the other towns around the area, and Milton seems to be giving a lot of complaints. So we need to get our backup on the board and complain. I think in the winter it's hard to complain, because you don't really hear anything with the tight windows. But we've also, just last meeting, last month, we decided to get a mailbox, so we don't have, like, I get stuff from Massport sent to my house, I'd rather have it go to the central mailbox in the town. We also have a hotline, a telephone, so we've already got that set up. I thank Tangi and the manager's office for helping us get that going. And again, we've recruited John Particuliano, and he was disappointed. Now, just a brief history, if people don't know about this committee. It's been around since 1971. That's quite, that's 42, 43 years. And it was appointed by the town committee, and I think the selectmen were involved. And some of the original members of the committee are still with us. Again, Bob, Dick, and Jerry joined back on, so maybe, Dick, did you inform the...
Really, Bob should tell you all about, because he was appointed with the original group.
Yeah, that's good.
The chairman was the fire chief at half...
David, yeah.
Mr. Mandoni, I can't think of his first name now all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the three selectmen. And I don't think, I think that was about it. There was somebody else, and I can't think of his name right now, but that was 40 years ago. I'm entitled not to...
So, and then Jerry Falvo, co-chair, is also, the vice chair, is also on the CAC, which is another committee that's... Well, Jerry, can you explain what the CAC is specifically, and some of the new things that we found out about it?
Yeah, excuse me, I have a lot of jitters. But the CAC, Citizen, Community Citizens, was created about 30 years ago in the help of Massport. And what it is, it consists of approximately 28 to 32 seasoned towns that are involved with the same problem with the airport, and we meet quite regularly. I represent the town of Winter on the CAC, and Bob Driscoll is the alternate. I think very briefly, I should bring you up to date what's going on. Our biggest involvement up to date now has been the Boston local airport noise ticket, or the acronym called BLANS. And it's been broken down to three phases. The first phase had to do with identifying the problem of the overflown and the ground noise. Phase two was to develop measures that might relieve the noise in some areas. During phase two, some of the measures that we proposed, incidentally, the CAC had its independent advisor, and the FAA and Massport had their own individual consultant. But some of the measures in phase two were accepted, some of the measures were not accepted, either that they caused more noise to areas that had been less affected, or they were impractical, in the sense that they did not seize nor produce stop noise. The third session, the third phase of which we're in right now, since what we proposed in the second phase has already been implemented, right now what we're attempting to determine is what runway configuration. Because of where we're located, we're not going to get outstanding noise relief. But what we hope to establish is to have a configuration, so, for example, if between the hours of 2:30 and 8:30 PM, and 8:30 PM, there is takeoff or landings on, say, runway 33 left, or 33 right, the purpose that we're trying to achieve is to have the tower change the configurations, so that the people who were exposed to that noise on 33 left will not be exposed again. In other words, as you know, at some times of the day, the use of the same runway continuously causes everyone in that particular area, such as Johnsonham Court Road in Point Shirley, to be affected by the noise. That's what we're attempting to do. Anything I have discussed this evening, I realize we have a brief time, if anyone has any interest, just give me a call, and I can get involved into more detail of what we're doing. My final comment is this. Probably the single biggest accomplishment that we have achieved in the last 10 years with the aid, substantial aid, of Representative DeLeo, Speaker DeLeo, was the legislation that was enacted last August, which calls for a new Massport CAC committee. This committee will be far more powerful and have far more leverage than the existing committee for a couple of reasons. Number one, Massport, under the legislation, will be obligated to pay the CAC, or to give them a budget of $250,000 per year. That obviously is going to enable them to hire their own experts, secretarial staff, the whole works. And then number two, the new legislation gives us significant power as to how to obtain information from Massport, down to the most important and here too, foreign secretive information. And finally, its board will elect a member from its membership only from with or beneath East Boston to a position on the Massport Board of Directors. And we haven't got it rolling yet, because we're still in phase three. But once we get it rolling, I think it will have significant importance. Now, I think it's obvious, but if it isn't, the importance to a community like Winter, it will share in the authority that is given to the CAC, and will share also through my, well, our involvement with regards to the expenditures, necessary fees, and so forth. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Jerry.
Tony, can I just check one thing here?
Okay, please, love.
Because what Jerry was just telling you is, of course, bringing him up to date on what is happening right now. But I think it's important for everybody to understand that way back, many years ago, when Massport got permission to build that Centerfield taxiway, which we strenuously objected to, well, our objections and the objections of other groups that were working with us resulted in the stipulations that were written into their permission to build that runway and to build the Centerfield taxiway. All these stipulations were built in there that forces Massport and the FAA to have these, this committee meeting that we're having now with the CAC. Otherwise, all of what he's just talking about never would have happened if these things were not written in. And they were in there because we fought so hard to make sure they did that. So they may have got their Centerfield taxiway, but we got all these provisions, which is eventually going to be extremely detrimental to this town.
There is an interesting history about what Bob said. Some of it is humorous. Again, anybody who wants any further information, just give me a call.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the ears.
The next topic, I was going to talk about a few activities we had from 2013 to present. I should go back to Veterans Day, 2012. We had a meeting, and a lot of people from Court Road showed up, and we televised that meeting. So you could go back into the archives, maybe Michael can get you copies. It was quite an interesting meeting. People are concerned, people are very concerned, you know, they're saying that every other house on Court Road has cancer. So that's why they're very, and then, of course, the people at Point Shirley are upset with the noise and stuff. So eventually, when Tom Glenn got appointed to the Massport CEO and Director, I think he spoke with Bob DeLeo, and we got together with a meeting. We had a meeting after we dedicated the bridge coming from East Boston. And so you folks, Peter was there, Jim McKenna was there, and Speaker DeLeo was there. And we spoke to Tom Glenn and some of the staff, and we brought up some issues. And the issues we brought up were flight operations with, Jerry was very influential, I know, we've got some systems we'd like to put in place, and we talked about the moist pollution. A lot of things that are not really addressed is we, I'm worried, being a wastewater guy too, I'm worried about stormwater runoff. You know, what's coming off? I mean, I think it was back October 2012, they had a fuel dump, went into the bay, killed the clams. You know, how's the Boston Clam Association going to get reparations for that? I don't know where it is. We also talked about air pollution, which will be in a minute, and the water pollution issues. We also discussed the Mass Department of Public Health Health Study Report. This is the big sword of Damocles holding over everybody. I'm also on the CAC Committee with the Mass Department of Public Health, thanks for the appointment from the committee, I mean, from the council. We had, I had one committee meeting last year, and they're proposing to have another one before it gets released. It is still in some sort of peer review, so we're looking at three years now. Yes, sir?
So you're a scientist that's done peer review, I would assume, before, and this is kind of absurd.
Well, I haven't done, what they did is they sent it out to very high people, different universities, to have a peer review. From my understanding, the peer review says you've got to do something else, they sent it back, and then it got re-re peer reviewed. So now, they're talking about things about, they want a big venue, where can they have it? They're thinking that, with the release of it, they're thinking of the DeLeo Senior Center, because it's got, you know, handicap accessible, it's centrally, plus, Winter's a big town, important to the, to the study. And then they've got to get it translated into multiple languages. And then, before they release it to the public, my understanding is they'll release it to, like, town managers, town councils, and the public health departments.
Have they given you a timeframe?
No timeframe yet. When I first came on board, November 12th of 2000, well, before that, probably about 2011, the thing was, well, it'll be here at the end of the year, then it'll be here in the spring, then it'll be here at this. So it's been going on for probably three years, a delay. And that's the study that was sort of prompted by Brian Dumpster's study. And they sort of used that as, you know, the public health said, "Oh, wow, there's some people getting sick here, let's start our own study." And the study has, they did 6,000 telephone interviews, and then they, two different companies did air pollution studies before and after a runway was put in. And so they're correlating that air pollution data with the 6,000 interviews, I think it's within a five-mile radius of the airport. So after that meeting that we had in November, we sent out a letter, so that was in August, we sent out a letter in November 2013. We got a response from that letter, and I have a copy of the letter here, which I'll hand over to the town council president. And, and we got a response, which we got March 7th, 2014. And they seemed to knock down everything we said, what we wanted done. One of the interesting things is, I, I used to work at Harvard School of Public Health, I knew a lot of PhD students, this is back in the 80s, and one guy is George Thurston, and I have his CV here, and I'll give that to you, Peter. And I'm using him, I've asked him, he may be with pro bono, but we would probably be expected to pay his, he's at New York University, to pay us to travel back and forth. The guy's pretty brilliant. He's, he's done just a quick peer review here. He's published a lot of stuff, but his latest publication, I guess, was in, well, he works on health, children's health, air pollution studies, and stuff like that. Actually, he was a graduate student at the time that Harvard School of Public Health did this famous study, the six-city longitudinal epidemiological study, where they measured air pollution, all the primary pollutants, and then they also did respiratory tests on children from kindergarten, sometimes to the first year of college. And from these studies, it's my understanding, that they were able to bring the data for sulfate, which are the fine acidic particles that come from halfway across the country, and also from ozone, that are, from that, we've set the primary standards in the United States. So George was involved in that, and was a defender of the study in air pollution research and health effects. And so they don't think we need one. So if George wants to do it pro bono, but if he can't do it, I thought we've received some funding that we could use that. Okay, as we said, it's not recovering, we still have problems with some of the stuff, they're not interested in doing anything with the windows, as Jerry said, they're not, or Dick said. And I also requested air pollution data. They've, there's some websites, and I can send it out to you folks, that have the summaries of the air pollution data before and after the runway was installed. What runway is that? 2009, is that 22? Remember, they did a runway, they put the big one in. Anyways, you know, I'm almost done, folks. But I asked for the individual daily data, and they haven't sent me that yet. It's on, like, DVD's, and no one's responded. The reason for that, I want to correlate what they gave us in statistics and see if it's like what it is. Again, we talked to George Thurston, and he's going to probably also compare the Brian Dumpster study with the new study that's coming out from DPH, if it ever comes out. And again, they didn't think we needed an expert witness. And again, we talked a little bit about the soundproofing installed, the windows are now deteriorating, are falling, failing to do soundproofing and weatherproofing. We just had a mini-meeting before this, and some people didn't take care of the houses, so that's part of the problem. But it was sometimes 30 years ago, well, they installed these windows, and they are not, they're not, you know, state of the art.
They wouldn't pass code now.
Exactly, thank you, sir.
They did it 30 years ago, and the code has changed so much, and the soundproofing daddy has changed so much, that they really should be doing it.
Yes.
They did Orient Heights, and Bay Harbor Street.
Right.
They should be doing what they did in Winter 30 years ago.
The quality, the workmanship 30 years ago wasn't as good as it is now.
And then when you use the lowest bidder. And so there, there are new...
At least it was bid out.
Yeah. So, in the new letter, the letter of November 2013, we're sort of requesting a new sound study. Since that time, 30 years ago, there's been a little bit more increase in activity. So we want to make sure that what they put in is actually being useful. And again, we got a petition from Bob Masser, assigned, they're really upset over at Point Shirley, he's the head of the Point Shirley Association, I believe. We had 90 or 92 people sign the petition. And so we would want to work with that and somehow get that to Massport. So basically, we've come here this evening to advise the council of what we're continually on the job, as stated in our mission statement. We have read, we have an audience with the town councils, we would have had an audience with town councils sooner, but, oh, there is no, there's nothing, we only want to report stuff to you that's important. We don't need to get you involved in, you know, nickel-and-dime stuff. Let's see. Again, the committee's been in existence for 43 years, run by, run by the town council, appointed citizens, formerly appointed by the town selectman, maybe from the town meetings. We will continue to perform our duties as stated in the mission statement. And we've sort of adopted a motto, if you've seen some of my programming, at the end, we always write, we always say, "Never..." Here's the motto. "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has," and that's by Margaret Mead, an American cultural woman. So I thank you very much for your time, gentlemen and ladies. And every third Thursday, we have a meeting, and I will, if you're all welcome at any time to come to our meetings, and, you know, just...
Tony, just a comment from, I learned at one of your meetings, when you were talking about people calling in or not calling in, how important it is.
Right.
The comment comes back from the airport, "Well, we never get any calls from Winter, so it must be okay."
Right.
It's important to call.
We've become complacent, and...
Right, good word. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Just because we have a public forum, who could the public contact or put pressure on to try and expedite getting this study released?
It was from the Mass Department of Public Health. The person in charge of it is Suzanne Condon. She's doing the best she can. There's been budget withdrawals and back, you know, and even Representative DeLeo is very concerned that it's not out yet, because this is his constituent... his constituents, and he wants to know, what are we being affected by? There's some people, I talk to a lot of citizens now and then, and they say, they're wondering, is this something, they found something bad, and they can't report it right now, because they've got to figure out how to sidestep it.
Do you have any questions, couple?
I have, you have access to get these statistics as to how many flights are going out late at night?
We can get that.
Can you get that, because there seems to be, there's been a big increase in flights that are after 10:00 p.m. and before 6:00 in the morning.
Yeah, they were supposed to stop from midnight to 5:00 a.m., but they don't.
Right, and that was part of the original agreement, and it doesn't seem like that's a fact, because I see and hear them all the time.
What they do to sidestep that service is to say, well, it's the, it's the DHL, and it's the FedEx that's coming in and out. And they don't, do they have control of those guys?
Yeah, they get fines, but it's worth it to them to pay the fines to get, that's what's, when you mix it.
If I may, interrupt. Yes, and Mr. Maja, question about this. We did our own local study here in town a number of years ago.
Yes.
All right. And we have a lot of information on that. We've been waiting for Condon, and if we went for Representative DeLeo, who went to that first, one year they'd get money in their budget, the next year they wouldn't, because of different economic issues. So, you know, we've tried to keep pressuring through Bob, who's trying to get that data for us. We're very dissatisfied with their response to us. All they're doing is, is, you know, whatever, peer review. And then we also suggested, okay, now, get this peer review, and we're going to get an answer. They are a state agency, they hired the people that are going to do the peer review, or they're controlling it. I wonder if there's any influence on this thing here, you know? So you have to think, though, we think on those kinds of issues when we get involved with these agencies, especially Massport. So we said, why don't you give us some power of exploring to put them? Why don't after the report comes out, fund us, so we can hire our own independent analysts? Maybe we want to find out something on our side of the fence. Just so you have an answer, DeLeo has been the controlling guy, he's been a lot, he's done a lot of work for us, really put the money up, through legislature, and we're frustrated, we're angry, we don't understand what's taking so long, 3:00, 4:00, it's done, it's done, it's done, oh, where is it? Show us. No doubt there's going to be some adverse comments in that, about the operation, Tony talked a little bit about particulate in the air, you know, we're concerned about health and safety, and years ago, the first thing was, we were concerned about, gee, what about airplane accidents? But these insidious things that happen in the air today, you don't know, you know, the carcinogens that are floating around, and all the other things. And we're looking at all, that's why we want this health study, to find out, is the airport going away? Nope, going to be here to stay. Do we understand that? Yep, and a lot of people in this town derive their living from the airport, airlines, Massport, whatever, contractors, so we have to, you know, credit balances. We want the data, so we can see how can it be improved, and therefore, raise some intelligence, okay, to be honest with you all over there, and find out, and take them to task. You know, there were laws to fight, there were laws not to fight. This is what we're interested in. As far as this 1533 runway that was referred to, you folks, they went to Mrs. Kelly and the conservation, and Mary said, whoa, stop, you don't want to talk to us. Why aren't you going to the airport hazards committee first? They admitted, may it help, or may it help us, so they're coming to us now. That's going to be some hearings, they're going to have to comply, whatever our, our conservation people say, the order condition, but it's going to go through, okay? Eventually, it's a safety factor, we're not going, that's not a law to get involved with. We're going to speak, you know, with heading wars, Dalvo and Driscoll here have gone through some big, big wars in the past, and they're all beat up today. And they're willing to do it again. And I think that's a credit, especially this fellow that's been 43 years on the mark. And you've got a lot of money for this show.
Oh, yeah.
And Jerry, with all the, giving us all the legal advice and all, and all this time and these things, so I think, you know, Tony has covered a lot of things on there, but we're there, we're in business, we have something to come back here, something of real substance, we're going to hear from him, especially if we quite follow, we want you to really get Mr. McKenna out of the office upstairs and lead the charge for us.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your support.
Good to see you, Jerry.
Thank you. Moving to public comment.
Yeah.
On the public comment.
Yeah.
Jerry, thank you.
Good to see you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jerry, thank you so much.
Hey, come on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, thank you.
You're welcome.
David, stay here.
Are you guys ready for the joke on this day?
You've never told a funny joke in your life.
Well, I go into a flea market, and I see somebody selling Barbie dolls. See, my daughter's got a birthday, I'm like, I'll get her one, so I go to the guy, "What do you got?" He said, "Well, I got the, I got the bathing beauty Barbie for $20, I got the bridesmaid Barbie for $20, and I got the divorcee Barbie for $80." I said, "Why is the divorcee Barbie so much more expensive?" He said, "Well, she comes along with Ken's house, and Ken's boat, and Ken's car."
Next time you have a good joke, take it to that. Thank you, David, for leaving here. Under public comment, I've had a request from Kathleen Capuccio, and I see there are also some people here from the, with concerns about Mahagan Sun, where Kathleen's issue came first, I'd like to start with her, and then, to keep things kind of separate, if there are other people who have concerns about the same as Kathleen, which I assume is the MWRA, then we'll do that group, then we'll move to the other, so we're not swapping back and forth. Ms. Capuccio, would you please, Dame Crease?
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, Crease Two. And to try to stay on track, which I often don't do, I apologize, I'm going to kind of read from my notes here. First, on behalf of, we certainly don't have a name yet, but referring to ourselves as of now, as the Citizens Action Committee, that our purpose is, is to just identify, evaluate, and deal with the town, and our town manager, and really work in concert with you, to the extent we can, the impacts of the MWR's operation of Deer Island on Point Shirley and our existing community, or the rest of the community, I should say, sorry. So a couple of things that, I guess I'm speaking on behalf of the Committee, and really the residents. So I guess I should probably say that, we just, we really want to thank, and I think I really speak on behalf of all the residents when I say this, we really want to speak, thank Bob, Speaker DeLeo, for getting involved in this issue, and working with Fred Lasky, who is, you know, head of the MWR, to get this program put on hold, I'm sorry, the program being the Code Digestion Pilot Program. You know, and I do want to say, and I don't know the gentleman's name, but I, you know, Paul Verone and I just exchanged eyes when he said it, the gentleman that was just talking about the airport hazards committee, when he was talking about citizens being able to make a change, and effect change, you know, it just so spoke to me, the change that was affected because of the initial work and continued work of Don Manning, getting people involved, has shown that citizens can make a difference. This, you know, the MWR is an enormous agency, and because of citizens' uproar, and talking to Speaker DeLeo, this program got put on hold. So I just, I'm not sure of the gentleman's name, but it just, it really got to my heart, because it's so true. So as I digress, off my notes, that's what I do. So, so what I'm going to say is, similar to our, well, again, I know this isn't a Q&amp;A, it's comments, so I'm not asking, I know you might not respond to what I'm saying, which is fine. Similar to Mr. McKenna providing a town manager's report, what we would like to see, or would propose, is that after Chief Flanagan attends the monthly MWR Board Directors Meeting, we would like to see the chief either coming and giving, similar to Mr. McKenna's report, a MWR report, if you will. And, you know, I would say in that, if, you know, my fault would be anything that's germane to Winthrop, of course not something that's germane to Nut Island or something else. I think, as we all can recognize and admit, it was a severe, severe lack of communication. Again, my, I'm not here to point fingers, but there was a severe lack of communication in some way between the MWRA, our town government, our town official, Mr. McKenna, somehow something communication lapsed. And I think for the benefit of all of us, the community specifically, and the citizens, but also for you, again, you know, as I've heard many of you say, you know, you have jobs, which of course you do. So I think for the flow of communication to come to Mr. McKenna, to come through you, I would think that a report either from Chief Flanagan, again, I would say at the Council meeting after the MWR report, I'm sorry, the MWR Board of Directors Meeting, if either he could come and present a man's report as Mr. McKenna does, or, again, I don't know how the charter and everything works, or if he could speak to Mr. McKenna, and Mr. McKenna could incorporate that within his report. So that's one thing that we would love to see happen. The second thing, or this is our comment, the second thing is, with the MOU expiring June 30, 2015, and especially with, you know, Mr. Lasky talking about just how hard, and I believe it was Quincy Paul, was it Quincy?
Correct.
You know, with Quincy's just getting an 18-month extension on, you know, their agreement, again, I think Quincy, in my humble opinion, has no comparison to what the impacts are on Winthrop. However, I think, you know, Chief Flanagan understandably tried to tell us, as did Mr. Lasky, we're up against it, in the sense of renegotiating a new MOU.
Just to break your train of thought for one second.
Sorry, sorry.
Kathleen did get asked for an increase of more than five minutes, and I said that I didn't have a problem with it. Is anybody on, anybody on the Council? If not, continue on.
I have all.
No, 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 that's okay, that's just a technical.
Yes, no, no, I understand, thank you, I appreciate that. So, because the MOU's coming up for negotiation, and again, you know, I think as citizens, and you know, Phil, Mr. Von Kory said, at a public meeting, which I think was important, this existing Council, and I believe Mr. McKenna, was not part of that MOU, actually, I know you weren't, because it was board selection, there was none of them. So you were not part of that negotiation, so our issues with the MOU, we're not trying to say are with you. However, you now, with Mr. Flanagan, are, are the process. So part of the process, as we're thinking, is what we would like to see, and again, how logistically it works, is we would love to see a subcommittee, as you have, I believe, like a public health committee maybe, or a finance committee, we would love to see an MWRA committee. The MWRA and the operation of Deer Island is a huge impact on this town, and it also, and I don't know the exact numbers, but whether it's 740,000, as they, you know, the MWR, so probably wants to tell us all the time how much money...
744.
744, how much money they give us. You know, they provide money to this town, so they're a big part of our budget, if you will. We would love to see a subcommittee formed between, you know, with, of members of the Council, to work with Mr. Chief Flanagan, and to work with Mr. McKenna, and I'm not sure if we have outside Council, I hope we do, that would be negotiating the MOU, just to work in concert. And we would love to, as citizens, and, you know, to be part of that process, in the sense of whether it's just emailing you our ideas, or what the concerns are. And then my last thing, I'm sorry, is what I would, what we're, you know, curious about as well, is since the town forum, and again, I know it's not a Q&amp;A, we would be interested in to see what contact either Mr. McKenna or the Town Council has had with the MWRA. I did speak with two members of the MWR yesterday, to, I asked for a press release as to what the status of the program is, again, it's on hold. I did not receive that as of yet. But I would, I would be curious, and we would be curious to see, has the Town Council communicated with the MWRA since the town forum? What is, I know you can't talk about strategy, but what is, the Town Council understandably, it's not part of how it was, never had a vote, because it wasn't, it just wasn't part of the process. We would just, as citizens, we'd really like to hear from you as to how you feel about this. Again, we've heard from Mr. Von Kory, and Linda, and, you know, Peter, and a couple, you know, Nick, a couple of people, and Mr. Maja, and we've heard from, actually, Paul, we've heard from, I guess, really almost all of you. But we would love to see where you guys stand, and what as our, as our governing body, and what as our town manager, you guys are going to do to protect this town.
Thank you, Kathleen.
That's it, thank you for your time.
Okay. I do have to comment on the, what Tony Maja said about citizen involvement, citizen committees, and I, and I look at your Committee, and I look at Winthrop's Worthless Committee, in getting the school built, and those were committees, those were people that were citizens, private citizens, who got out there and did it. And, and I think it goes to show you that the outcry of public citizens is much more powerful than the outcry of the Council. Thank you. Anybody else on the MWRA situation? Yes, sir?
My name's Dave Johnson, I live at 12 Elliott. I just have a couple of concerns, which I mentioned in the last meeting, which we have for a week. I've been a homeowner now for five, six years, and when I first moved in, I reported to the city about my sidewalk with pad holes, and my wife pulling on the driveway, using bottom out in the sidewalk. I reported to the city, they came down, saw it, made amends, and fixed it right away, they did a good job on that. And now it's three years, three, four years later, and I now have new holes in the sidewalk from the trucks. I see tons of buses that come by, all times of the day, even late, and not one bus hits my curb. But every time these trucks come down during the day, they hit the corner of the curb right on my driveway, and it hurts to the whole house. And then, it doesn't bother me during the day, but at midnight, 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, I work during the day too, which I can't get no sleep, because I hear that, sounds like a tie's popping. If you look right on the curb, the curb's just covered with tire marks. I don't know what we can do to fix that, but that's just something I would like to bring up.
Thank you.
One other thing is, we already have the smells from the other storage stuff from Deer Island. My other concern with this food process is, will that add to it? Would it make anything worse or better? So would I do, in your readers of this new food processing, put a clause in there to look at that, so if it's a big cause, it causes a bigger problem, we can react to that later on, that's in the contract. That we can't say, well, we already did the contract, there's nothing we can do about it. Whether maybe, whatever process it makes the smell, maybe wait for the wind to blow the other way, just like you do with the planes sometimes, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yes, John?
Don Manning, 10 Elliott, and I promise him that we're very, very grateful.
Crease Three.
I'm going to actually save the town money, and Mr. Delvento is going to help me, because he's going to recall that when we were at the Winthrop Yacht Club, and we had a meeting with the MWRA, and we were discussing the five-year cleanout, and they were expressing, when we were expressing all the damage to our roads and our sidewalks, what was going to happen after, while these trucks came through? And Mr. Morris, Morris, and the rest of the officials there, promised, promised, that after the five-year cleanout was done, the MWRA was going to come along the truck route, and they were going to fix the streets by repaving the streets and fixing all the sidewalks. And that was Winthrop Yacht Club in '09, and Mr. Delvento was there. So I would encourage Mr. Delvento and the Council to step up, go after the MWRA, because as a committee, or non-committee, because we don't have the official rules yet, where there's nobody in charge, there's no president or treasurer, we can't physically do that. But it was a promise made, Mr. Delvento was there, there are citizens throughout Winthrop that were there, there was probably about 100 people that night, if not more, I will knock on their doors and present them in front of you if I have to. But that will save the town some serious money, if you can make them follow through on that promise. We deserve that truck route paved over, we deserve our streets, our sidewalks, somebody's going to wipe out on my sidewalk, and it's not my fault. And I'm not talking about just in the winter, when I can't shovel it perfectly even, I'm talking about when everybody walks by my house every day, when they sidewalk on the island in the summer. So I would please encourage you to do your best, and go after them, to follow through on that promise, and fix the, our route, our truck route, from what it is, what they deemed to be the truck route, and I believe it was the 88 MOU, that I have a copy of, so I would please encourage you to do that.
Thank you, John. Yes?
After that last meeting at the yacht club?
I got to have you, just for the phone half, I know.
Eight, half, seven?
Crease Three, thank you, Bill.
After that meeting at the yacht club, I sent two men out.
I gotta have you, just for the phone half. I know.
Eight, half, seven.
Precinct 3. Thank you, Bill.
After that meeting at the yacht club, I sent two men out, they took all kinds of pictures, we never heard a word since. The city was still in a jar somewhere else, and finally they smelled and they catch David's sidewalk. Whatever material they used, it wasn't up to par, because it's all parted and it's all fallen apart. And every time somebody hits it, it, it's a cheer, it's even more and more, and her sidewalk gets right across the street. If they're not on one side, they're on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you who it was that came. It was Nancy Williams' husband, he's retired from the MWRA now. Um, it was right after the meeting, after Winthrop Yacht Club, uh, I'm sorry, to Nancy Williams' husband, I'm sorry, I forget his first name.
Jimmy.
Thank you, but he was down and at my house, and we had a long discussion, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
There you go, that's your contact that was fixing Dave's.
Thank you. Any further comments on the MWRA?
Todd Sago, precinct 2. So I have a few questions here, and I heard Kathleen mention that this isn't a Q and A session, but I've been to these meetings before and I've had my questions answered several times, so I'd be surprised if I don't get, if I don't get the answers. First question has to do with Mr. Flanagan, and this is not a reflection at all on who he is, the job he's done as the chief of the fire department, and I think he's done an admirable job. Uh, this is more about his role on the board of the MWRA, and his role as the chief of the fire department here in Winthrop. I'm just wondering if that appointment has ever been vetted by the Ethics Commission?
The, you can, you can talk about positions, but specifically, the rules prohibit discussion of personalities.
Okay. I don't know that that was personality, but, okay. Uh, the next question I have is, when was the first meeting between the town manager, the council president, and Mr. Lasky?
Do you have any other comment?
I had a question.
This is a comment period.
Okay, so, okay, well, I intend to come to as many means I can and ask these questions until we get answers, because I think the public deserves to know.
I think you have, I think you have a freedom of information request in, and you can.
The second question I have is, who told Mr. Lasky that this wasn't going to be a problem, it's, and I quote, "only a few more trucks"?
Any further comments on the MWRA issue?
Suspected.
Goodness, thank you. Um, we had some people from the casino. Did they have questions? Or comments? Mr. Rivera.
John Rivera, precinct 1. I, too, have a question, don't know if I can answer it or not, but on the meeting at May 18th, the motion was made and unanimously accepted to invite Suffolk Downs and Mohegan Sun to come do a presentation, and to videotape that presentation, and then to send the videotape of that presentation to the Gaming Commission.
I apologize, I didn't respond to your email on it.
Well, you did, you did thank me for pointing it out, but I just was curious.
Yeah, and what I did was, I did go back and review the DVD, and, actually, the one that you sent. And the issue was that it was discussed as a motion, and then the, the procedure on a vote is that the motion is restated and then voted on. The motion was restated, and that piece was left out. Then the motion was amended. The amendment failed, the motion was amended again, Second Amendment passed. Then the motion was restated as amended and voted. The technicality of the whole issue is that if you reread that loop, or relook at that loop, the last two restatements of the motion did not include, did not include sending it to the MWRA. I mean, sorry.
We can send it to them too.
To the MGC.
No worries.
So basically, the, the correction that we made in the minutes tonight was not a correction like that, it was a correction on the amendment process. But the process of the motion, the restatement of the motion twice, did not include sending to the MWRA.
Casino.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
So, will it be sent? No.
If the council wants to send it. Yeah. By the way, it is, if any citizen can send it.
Right.
But if, if the council decides they.
Really has more weight coming from the council.
I don't know, the more weight, I think, came from Kathleen's book, but, but yes, the council has the opportunity to take a vote to send it.
Also on the agenda tonight is, in all business, is a motion to discuss whether we can send a letter to the SJC. On May 5th, the SJC will hear a case, it's basically the people who formed the committee to repeal the casino deal, uh, to allow the people to vote on whether we have casinos in Massachusetts at all. And the Attorney General, back in September, denied our right to have a vote, for the first time in the history of Massachusetts. Despite that denial, we still went out and collected over 90,000 signatures, and now are in the same situation as every other ballot petition. Now we just face this hurdle at the SJC. Um, as, as you've learned, you know, Winthrop has been left out of the process, we've all learned this from what we've seen with Mohegan Sun and Suffolk Downs, we've just been chomped aside. And the Gaming Commission, you know, really all they can do is come in and impose an agreement on us, whether we like it or not. On April 1st, you held a meeting, you invited all of the people from Winthrop to come, in fact, Mohegan Sun sent a letter to, I believe, every residence, at least I got one, and everybody I know got one, asking them to come out and support the casino. And what you heard on April 1st was a resounding no from the residents of Winthrop. And I think, you know, you did a great job in controlling that meeting and letting people speak, and everyone had the opportunity to. Many times, citizens have urged this council over the past four years to stand up for Winthrop's rightful place in this. As you have pointed out, Council President Gill, and Winthrop's not only a surrounding community, it's a surrounded community, and we deserve special status. Uh, we asked, I, I, maybe I should talk to you about speaking to the speaker, because I've visited his office, I've made phone calls, he's never gotten back to me. We rented middle school, we hired a police detail, we held a forum, we had both sides back in 2011. Come out, and we asked our senator, we asked our speaker to come out and tell us why it was such a good idea for Winthrop to have this casino next door. Neither one of them wanted to return our calls. Now you have an opportunity tonight, once again, once again, to stand up for the people of Winthrop, because no one else is, and at least ask, whether you're for the casino or against the casino, at least ask the SJC to allow this to go forward. Everything that precedes this, all the case law that precedes this, we have a very recent case where in 2008, Greyhound Racing was allowed to be on the ballot, people were allowed to vote on that. You have the opportunity now to support that as well.
I'm sorry, John, I didn't understand, to ask the SJC what?
To allow the people the right to vote on the measure.
Oh, to allow it to go on the ballot, okay.
That's it. That's all, that's all we're asking for. The support of the right of the people to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
I believe that was, um, the one that we referred to council to ask their opinion on, that hopefully we'll find out.
That one that we referred to council was on a specific issue?
A letter to the SJC in regards to the.
Yes. In regards to the.
In regards to what he was speaking about.
No, was it, was it, was it in regards to, it was in regards to the lead, the complication of information that we felt was confidential, and it was determined that that wasn't confidential, that that was, I think that was.
No, no, this was a different one, this was, um.
Okay, Mr. Reddick. Okay, thank you. Any other? Please.
We started the meeting, thank you first.
Precinct 4.
Precinct 4. Yes. Thanks. I'd like to do two things, I kind of wanted to read a letter, and I have a few questions. First, though, following up on what we just heard, Tom McJohn's comment, I would urge, I did review, I read, I saw the YouTube video three times about that meeting prior to the April 5th, and I felt this sort of technicality, I understand what you're talking about being, it was just an oversight, or unfortunate thing that the beginning of the motion was not picked up at the end. Um, so I would ask each of the counselors, all of you, to make a motion tonight that the DVD be sent to the Mass Gaming Commission. So that's just a comment following up on what I'm trying to say. So two things I want to do would be to read a letter, and then I have a few questions. This is a, I wanted to read the council letter that a number of us wrote to the editor of the, with the transcript, which was not published, a number of the letters that have been submitted haven't been, around the casino, haven't been published, so I just wanted to at least read it into the record and let people hear it. Dear editor, I am writing regarding, I've taken out some names, like, just, I just don't want to do that. So I'm writing regarding comments made by a prior town council president at the April 1st town council meeting on the Mohegan Sun Casino. In those comments, he chastised some councils for, quote, "public nonsense of writing letters to the Gaming Commission personally," unquote, and raised questions about how that affects trust in the negotiations over mitigation. We strongly disagree with this criticism. Let's be very clear, the town council negotiated confidentially and in good faith. Mohegan Sun breached the council's trust and broke the rules of the negotiations by writing a letter publicly revealing and rejecting Winthrop's position and sending it to parties throughout the Commonwealth. Mohegan Sun, not the town council or any of the council members, violated the confidence, and thank goodness they did. Otherwise, the residents of Winthrop would have no idea just how bad a deal we were getting. And thank goodness, some of our counselors have had the courage to speak out and write letters to the Gaming Commission to expose Mohegan Sun's total disregard for our community. That is why we voted them into the office, to provide leadership and have courage not to cower. There is absolutely no requirement for these negotiations to be held in confidence, despite some suggestions that it is commonplace at times, and it is commonplace at times. We all saw where that cut us. Now, the last thing that our council, the town council should do is to resume the discussions in private. In our view, those councils who spoke out to the Mass Gaming Commission, yes, personally, should be praised, and we applaud them for displaying the leadership that we elected them to provide. Sincerely, Lisa Alberghini, Carol Fischello, Anita Pache, and John Rivera. I, I would say that there were a number of other people who didn't get to, who wanted to sign out this letter, didn't get to add their names before it had to be submitted to meet the deadline to the transcript, but it wasn't published. I wanted to, following up on that, thank the councils who've been able to stood up and, and made comments and written letters to the Gaming Commission, and all of the many, many residents of the town of Winthrop who've come out to speak out. We all have absolutely no doubt that that is what has us in more meaningful conversations right now, so we want to thank you for that. One other quick comment, and then I'll get to my three, my questions. Um, I've been, I'm a real estate developer, I've been in a lot of negotiations, I've been in litigation around a lot of negotiations, and I know really clearly there is absolutely no requirement in a negotiation for confidential discussions or secrecy. That's one way to do it, and, you know, maybe the attorney advises that, some do, some don't, but there is no legal requirement for sure that these conversations be happening in private, and really truly, we saw where that cut us, and it didn't work. So, now I'll get to my three questions. The first is that I, you know, you may know, obviously, everyone knows I'm against the casino, I think no mitigation would be sufficient. That said, we are in these conversations, and I have a lot of concerns about the process here and where we are, because I understand it, I've done some reading, again, the last day or two on this. The deadline for best and final offers is April 29th, as I understand it, and I think that's also the same deadline for the parties choosing an arbitrator. So I'm assuming that this is, there's a very good chance that this will end in arbitration, because I don't know how that's going, but I think it's a good chance it will. Certainly, whether or not you believe that now, we have to be prepared for that. So my question, my first question is.
Just one second, if there's no objection, I'll at least extend the time.
Okay, I'll be another one minute, and then.
I would say that in, out of courtesy to others in the room, we shouldn't respond to questions.
No, we won't be responding to questions.
But I will put these out there, and it would be great if you would get back to us, or, and we'll follow.
Yeah.
If there's a way, we'd also need to know what the procedure is for getting the questions answered, so we can do that, in whatever way it works. So, um, I think the deadline for both best and final and choosing arbitrator is the 29th. My first question is, how does the town council select an arbitrator? That's question number one. Question number two is, Council President.
Will you give those to me, so I don't have to worry?
Sure, don't worry about it. And this is a transcript, yes. Uh, the second question, it's Council President, you've talked, said to me before, but I've asked questions, that the town has hired a traffic consultant, and I think NA PC to study impacts of the casino. And my question is, are those studies completed, and if not, when will they be done, and when will they be released to the public? It seems as though when we're in arbitration, that's all going to be about the evidence that we, each side presents. And so those studies would be crucial in providing, presenting, creating a case to give us the mitigation that we deserve. So the second question is, are those studies done? If not, when will they be, and when will they be released to the public for us to review and provide input that has helped this process, I think, in getting us in serious conversations? The third question is, this is a follow-up to a comment, a couple of comments that were made at the April 1st public hearing. There was one gentleman in particular who asked a question, who said that he thought it was appropriate and important that the town council, that request host status, host community status. So my third question is, is the town council requesting host community status as the city of Boston is? There are many, I've heard the legal requirement, there are many, the standards for that are ones that, in the same way they did the city of Boston, can also apply to the town of Winthrop.
Thank you, Lisa. Any further comments? Yes, Carol.
Hi, Chalphachal precinct 4. I want to commend the council for your people's first meeting with Mohegan Sun and the citizens of our town. It was a wonderful effort to give us a chance to be heard, the members, I was astonished to see how many came out against the casino and not in favor of it. I think it's absolutely essential, it's a follow-up to that meeting, that the council agree to send that videotape to the MGC. Otherwise, it's ineffective. We can complain among ourselves, we can argue with Mohegan Sun, they can turn a deaf ear to us, you'll go nowhere. The Mass Gaming Commission needs to know where this town stands on these very important issues, so I urge you, please, to send that videotape to them. Our voice needs to be heard, to them directly. Uh, my second point is to support what John and Lisa have said. John asked that we help you, whether you agree with the casino or not, to support our efforts to put this on the ballot. The democratic process demands that the voice of the people be heard. We have had other issues on the ballot, the Attorney General is refusing to cooperate, I hope the Supreme Judicial Court will hear us, but we last year voted on the use of medical marijuana, we voted on the use of physician-assisted suicide. Issues like that can be placed on the ballot for citizens to respond, why not something as important as a casino and the change in the quality of life? So I urge you to support this initiative. Thirdly, I want to applaud, I attended, and a few of us attended, the planning board meeting last night, and I want to applaud their efforts. They were very thorough, they gave their expert opinions, we have lawyers on that board, we have architects on that board, and they gave a very thorough, thoughtful analysis of the impact in this town from a planning board perspective. This was not their personal opinion, this was from the planning board's opinion. It was a very strong statement, I urge you to look at their statement, I urge you to support their statement, and that also should be sent to the Gaming Commission, they've accomplished quite a bit. Lastly, I'd like to urge you to consult with the other boards in town. We have great boards, you respect them, you've appointed them, let them do their job, let them give you feedback on the impact this casino will have from their professional perspective. Why are we not encouraging that dialogue? Why don't we want their input? Let them do their job, get their input, and use that, again, as the voice of the people to be heard, to that Gaming Commission. Okay, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else?
Robert Carroll, precinct 6. Just to follow up on that, I'm also a member of the planning board, although I'm talking as a person myself this evening.
Could you speak up a little?
Sure. Um, the, the planning board last night unanimously voted for a, on a policy statement regarding the Mohegan Sun Casino at Suffolk Downs. It was, in our opinion, the first comprehensive document that a town board has generated on this very important issue. It was as wide-ranging as we felt, you know, professionally able to put together. It included, you know, the usual topics of transportation and traffic, but also land use, development, environmental impacts, open space, and the social and school impacts as well. So, um, again, I mentioned that it was voting unanimously, we have a pretty diverse board, there's, you know, two lawyers, two architects, a really good developer, and, you know, actually, you know, people from the fire department, and kind of infrastructure. So, you know, we have a diverse group, we're able to get together. It's not, it's not a sort of editorialized to the point of absurdity, it is just a real look at the issues, the multiple issues. At the very least, if it's not a no to the casino. At the very least, if it's not a no to the casino, at the very least, is a laundry list of things that hopefully you guys can use for a mitigation in the talking with them. I know this is lots of stuff that you've already thought about, hopefully it sheds some light, and some other things that you may not have, and put it into some context for you. So, we're happy to help, support in any way we can, and I'm happy to help as a citizen, as an architect, and as a member of the board as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's terrific. Any further public comment, Chief?
President, I usually try to decide with as many citizens as possible. However, strategically, works well for us, giving a lot of tickets. However, there's one thing I'd like to caution, as well as the council, on how much information we are releasing pre-arbitration. It gives the other side opportunities to prepare for our arguments, our experts are going to present at arbitration. It also will weaken our position during the arbitration process, so I'd just like to bring that, those issues to the forefront as well, because the last thing we need is the other side to know our strategy, our expert opinions, before we even get to the arbitration table. So, thank you.
Thank you for your input, Chief. Any further public comment? Any comment from the council? Moving on to correspondence, I'm going to be repetitive, but I do have a letter from John Rivera, and John, we discussed that basically about the, and I had one also from Kathleen Capuccio asking for an extension of her time. We received a copy of the statement from the planning board, it was mailed to the council, and it is available, it's public information from the planning board. It's six pages long, so I don't intend to read it tonight, but I do want to thank the planning board and commend them for the efforts and the professionalism and the completeness of the, of the report that they did.
Excellent job.
Yes, and I have to concur with the chief that that's information that will certainly be useful to us as we, as we're in the process of gathering information. Committee report. Council, rules and ordinance?
Yes. The rules and ordinance committee met last evening at seven o'clock in the council chambers room. Present at the meeting, myself and Nicholas Delvento. Council Veroni was excused. Also present was James McKenna, town manager, and Louis Poto and Ralph Iannuzzi. Town manager addressed us on, addressed us on the inspectional services department. We had discussed the issue of department head status for the commissioner, and then he also addressed us on the waterways rules and regulations. Council Delvento made motion to approve the inspectional services ordinance as amended, was seconded by myself, it was voted unanimously, under the waterway rules and regulations. There were two amendments made to the rules and regulations, and they concerned section 11 and section 20. Motion was made by Nick to approve those two amendments, and it was passed unanimously again. The meeting adjourned at 8:00 PM, and we will be bringing both of those up under new business, or old business.
So, those, the second one was passed after amended?
After amended, yeah. I'll be reading the amendments.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Town managers, any other committee reports? If not, town managers.
Good evening, thank you. I am happy to begin my remarks this evening by announcing that we did receive successfully a state parks grant of $200,000 to rehabilitate Coughlin Park. That coupled with the funds that the council has set aside for that park brings us close to $250,000, which we will be able to spend, which will go a long way to fully restoring that park. And so, that's a, that's a big project that we'll undertake this year as we move into the spring and summer months, and the parks committee will have a lot to do, if any of them are still here.
I want to see him.
You know, that's going to be a wonderful next step for the community, and we're very excited to see...
Can I editorialize on that a little bit?
You bet.
We have to give the credit to Peter, to Joe for doing that.
Right.
But I also have to say that the parks committee was sparked by Dawn and her group, and I think we should be very proud of, that's another example of the citizens getting out and doing it. And now, we can say that not only did the citizens get out and do it, but they were, the parks were funded by the town higher than they have been in the past, and now this, this kick in is significant, and the parks committee is to be commended for what they've done, and also Mr. McKenna and Joe for what they've done in pulling this together. And I know you hate to hear the word, because it's an old one of mine, the acronym of TEAM, Together Each Achieves More, and you guys as a team, along with Steve and Sean Driscoll, Parks Committee, Jim, Joe, I'm very happy to see the big, big, significant improvement. Thank you all.
So, that's exciting, to see the momentum continue on our parks restoration throughout the community. You may notice that Pond Street Park is getting addressed this year and is on its way to improvement as well. So, we're very excited about the improvement in these public, important public spaces in town. A brief transportation bond bill update, I'm happy to report that I received word from the speaker's office today that our two projects came out of conference committee successfully, and so, we are knock on wood, hopefully yet again, that the legislative process is bearing fruit for the town of Winthrop, that the Winthrop Street Carter project at 2.250 in funding for that project, I think probably 50% of that project seems to be funded under the bond bill, which is exciting, and Walk Winthrop, $500,000 to start our process in developing our Walk Winthrop project. So, those continue to survive, and hopeful that the conference committee report will be accepted by the governor and signed off on, and we will see eligibility for those funds to be available to the town in the near future. That will require us to do engineering. We're doing, as you know, significant engineering on the Winthrop Street Carter project already, so that's well underway. We will need to begin engineering on the Walk Winthrop project, the first phase being creating a walking path that connects the already existing walking path at the DCR property at Short Beach, and continuing that along through the Belle Isle Marsh area, adjacent to the Marsh, Marsh, and along Wharton Street and out to connect to Main Street in Winthrop. And that'll be a lovely opportunity for the town to create a walking path with, you know, education points and of interest, and, you know, create some ecotourism potentially for the town, to invite people to become acquainted with one of only four great marshes in the Commonwealth, but is, is one that is unfortunately not the most well-known, but we certainly could see some tourism happen as a result of that, some educational programming. A number of opportunities could come with, with creating ways in which the public access, you know, nature in that respect. And so, that's what we hope to do with that walkway, and that being the first and very important piece of Walk Winthrop. So, we're excited to see that, that go forward. We are looking to a number of items that have been presented to the council through motions, so I'll save comment until those motions come up, but one that we wanted to talk about specifically tonight was a brief presentation by Director Steve Kala on the engineering for the Prospect and Cottage Hill Street areas and Plumber and Woodside and Pico project, because that is necessary for us to do engineering in order for us to make funds available for funding those projects as the next phase of significant waterworks projects for the town. So, I'd ask Steve to make a brief presentation to the council.
Good evening. As the manager has explained, we are proposing a water infrastructure improvement project called Contract Four. It entails complete water main restoration in the Cottage Hill area, as well as water main improvements at Pico, Francis, Plumber, Sunnyside, that area. We have an exposed main on the beach behind Woodside Park. The pre-construction estimated cost at this point before going to big is approximately $2.7 to $2.8 million. We want to get that number, you know, better, a better number, we've got to get the engineering done at a cost of $147,000. The motion is going to propose that we use retained earnings from the water department to fund the engineering of this, of this project. What that does for us is initially, we were going to come to you, or I was going to come to you, and with the motion to propose bonding of $2.8 million. The $147,000 for the engineer will now be taken off, the engineer was built into that, into that project amount. So, the bonding request would be $147,000 less than that, and it'll give us a more exact number. We might be coming to you for $2.6, $2.5 million. Really, you know, we want to get to that point with the engineer, we've got to get that done. Again, the entire Cottage Hill area will be upgraded, water main streets will be repaved, and we will be taking care of a critical link over in the Pico, Pico Ave area. We're getting an exposed main off, off the beach, and rebooting that water main on land, and rebuilding the streets as well in that area.
As you may recall, you know, we have planned, programmed the Cottage Hill and Prospect areas as the next step for our Chapter 90 funding, but the more you look in, under the rocks, you find bugs and issues. And what we've recognized is that it's necessary for us to, if we go forward with a major, you know, road repair, we need to address things in the street, not just on top of the street. And so, if there's significant issues, liabilities that we're aware of, we need to address them. So, the engineering helps us to understand what's in the street, what's the, what the conditions are that we face, and how to better package, you know, and get a quote on, on the infrastructural expenses, so that we can come back to you with a reliable number. That's why it's important for us to start the engineering process, so that we can, we can do that and, and be confident in the, in the proposal as we move it forward.
So, with, on these two projects, we'll be looking not only at water lines, at sewer lines, gas lines, the whole bit of...
Yeah.
We're going to contact National Grid, explaining the scope of our project for water infrastructure. Their, their engineering team is looking at those roadways to see which, which pipes they, they would need to replace prior to us doing, doing the project. Obviously, we wouldn't want to repave a road with gas main that would need to be replaced in the near future. The engineering work, just so you know, it includes all the survey work, all the camery of our sewer, storm drain lines, to make sure that, again, nothing needs to be repaired prior to repaving the roadway. There is a potential easement required in the, in the Pico Ave area to make a loop from Carina Beach Road to a water main that we've laid in, in Pico Park as part of that project. And then, the engineer takes us all the way through, to and through the bidding process, so...
And that's sort of what you did on the Somerset and Bellevue, you did the gas mains and the whole bit?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah?
Just a question, if you want. I just wanted to know, did we also include any sidewalk repair in that? I know you, I heard you say the streets, but usually...
We're going after MWRA water money. They will not let us fix unaffected sidewalk. If we open up a sidewalk as part of the water main project, in other words, replacing a service, those cement handles will be replaced upon the project. And there's, there's probably about 40 or 60 services on the wall, you know, in the, in the Cottage Hill area alone. Well, it's probably 40 or 60 services per roadway. So, there's a lot of sidewalk that will get replaced, but it won't be like you see on Walden Street, entirely new sidewalk. We don't have the Chapter 90 money to support that in the water, MWRA will not allow their money to be used for sidewalk improvements, other than the sidewalk that is, that is affected by the project, for, for the water infrastructure improvements.
Thank you for clarifying that, Steve.
Any other questions, council?
Steve, I just, one question, I know you said it, the gas line replacement. There's, as you know, Cottage, I've actually had some of the oldest gas lines in the Northeast region, and most of that, most of the hill has some very, very old gas lines, which we've had a number of problems up there, at least in the past. Just to really emphasize with them that they, they've got some work to do.
And this could very well push off that, that phase of the project, like a year or two years by the time National Grid is allowed to do their, their work. But again, it was, what we want to do is, we want to bid this project in the scale of a larger scale project. We feel we get a better bang for our buck. You get a, oftentimes, we get a larger company that is bonded to bid on these types of projects, and, you know, it's, I think, more beneficial for the town, instead of breaking these things up into a bunch of smaller projects, and having engineering companies that may not be, just on the verge of being able to handle the project, being able to bid on them, bid them as a bigger project, and, and we could bid it and have it Phase One, Phase Two, until the gas company does their work.
And I just want to jump in with one more thing, and I'm going to make the fire chief cringe on this. The gas is a hot, very big concern, and they all have a lot of engineering to do, because a lot of the services are very old. I'm under the belief that a lot of the services don't have shut offs in the street or curb, or on the sidewalk.
A lot of the water services?
The gas services. So, just to be teed up, the gas is going to be very, I think, extensive up there, the gas work.
Yes, I would submit that, you know, when we bring the plan to the council, and particularly the subcommittee of the council on, on public works, if there's anything that we can identify as certainly, you know, needs to be addressed up there, if, say, a water service doesn't touch a certain section of sidewalk, but it's completely derelict condition, you know, we won't leave that undone. We, we'll do our level best to address and bring up to a level of acceptability, you know, a sidewalk condition that is clearly in need of being addressed. We don't want to leave anything, you know, if we make a pass through there with a significant project, I would submit that we wouldn't leave something, you know, that's a public safety concern or hazard in the, in the ground. We will, we will try to address it in some way, shape, or form. If it's repositioning our monies that we use annually on sidewalks, or repositioning some Chapter 90 money to assist in that.
Any further questions from the council? Thank you, Steve. Mr. Manager?
And then, I'd like to go to do a quick monthly update for us. I just want to point out one thing regarding the proposed project. The annual debt service from that will be somewhere around $250,000, $260,000 annually, so we need to keep that in mind in terms of the impact on the rate as we move forward with this project. I did put in the Dropbox for the council, the financial report through the month of March. It has the revenue through 3/31, actual to budgeted expenditures as well, and it has the use of free cash to date and all the special revenue fund. Keep in mind that when you're looking at those revenue numbers, it's through 3/31, so I know that if you look at motor vehicle excise tax, it's relatively low compared to the prior year. That's because the commitment in the billing last year was done a little bit earlier, about three weeks earlier, so excise taxes for this particular commitment we're on were due a week ago yesterday, and in terms of what's come in, what's actually has come in the door as of today is significantly higher than that. It's actually getting pretty close to the actual budget. So, if you have any questions on that, then on, just, you know, we're busy with the FY15 budget and getting all our inputs from the departments, and both on the narrative side...
budget and getting all our inputs from the departments and both on the narrative side and on the dollar side. Other than that, we had 110 letters went out on April 8th for properties that are potentially going to go into tax title. People have responded, a lot of, many have come in and paid, and those that haven't paid within the two-week timeframe indicated in the letter will take the next step toward tax title. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor President, if you have any questions? Joe, can you give us an update on the ferry and whether or not that's going to be in service this year? I have a lot of people that call me.
We're challenged, to be quite honest with you. We were hopeful that we would have the Massachusetts Planning Organization, the MPO, release the funds for the acquisition of the ferry. They haven't done that yet. We passed through a public hearing on it successfully, and we're poised to see the funds released. But, you know, if I were to say that the biggest challenge that we've had with our ferry has been bureaucracy in getting the funding made available to the town so that we could go out with our RFP and begin that purchasing process. Unfortunately, that kicks us into a season without an answer to the question of a ferry right now. We are exploring some dialogue with the MBTA right now. We've put in calls to them, asking if they could seek clearance, supplement us for a season so that we can get one of the providers of service to come in and help us while we bridge this period. And that's under consideration, but we have not received any kind of affirmative statement from them, one way or the other, on that. We are also exploring some contacts that we have relative to private vendors to see if they could fill a void. And that call is out right now to see if they, if there's anyone that has a vessel and is interested in service with the hopes of, you know, gaining some ground in terms of operating our service going forward. We'd be certainly inclined. But everyone's looking for a subsidy. You know, it's about money. They want paid upfront by either the town or the Commonwealth to provide the service because they can't guarantee that their expenses will be covered under the ticket revenues that they would receive. So there's reluctance on the part of providers without the vessel in place. That always was our big, you know, piece, was to have the vessel in place, and then we could, you know, ask for an operator to simply come in and operate it and not have that debt or that expense to, you know, of the vessel as part of the pro forma so they could make a go of it. Without the vessel here to provide, it really is a full expense that they would bear for the season. So it's a challenge for anyone to come in and do it. In fact, you know, we think that there's a book of business to be made out there, and we're hopeful that we would get some positive reaction to some private vendors at this point. But without a public subsidy, it's a challenge. Most, all ferry services are subsidized by the Commonwealth, the MBTA, except the whole ferry.
What did we have last year? Were they subsidized as well?
No, it wasn't, and that was the challenge. That's why I had some difficulties because, you know, the fuel expense and the labor expense are so high that you really have to have the numbers be there to ensure a successful season, you know. And we ended up picking up the bill for one of the months for that season just to see if that, if the ticket revenue would be there to sustain the vessel. And it was a challenge.
So do we need to make a public, you know, notice to the PMO?
We started dialing in the office. You know, Joe and I have been calling up folks to talk about it.
Yeah.
But I don't mind. I'm glad you brought the issue up because it's, you know, we've been asked about it too, and, you know, we don't have an adequate answer yet on it, so.
And one other thing. When you were talking about Waltham Whentrop, I just want to say this. I was coming home into Whentrop the other day, and right at Shark Beach, there was a little bus, and there were about half a dozen people with a tour guide going into the marsh. So that is happening, and that, people are very interested in the ecosystem and all of that, and I think that's going to be great.
Yeah, you're right, Counselor. We, you know, and when we met with the Greater Boston Tourism Bureau, when we talked about Belle Isle Marsh, and we talked about what our plan was for the development of a walkway along there and outposts for educational purposes, and, you know, they were thrilled at that idea. They said that they could market that all day long because they have a lot of ecotourism that's happening throughout the world now, and they would love an asset within the, you know, arms-length of Boston to be able to market for the town.
Yeah, I can see why, the kids doing field trips and all that stuff from all the different schools, and them all really learning about nature and all things that are there. I think that's going to be awesome. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the town engineering? If not, under all business, Counselor Von Cory, Inspection Service.
The Committee of Wuthering Organization is moving that we adopt an amendment to the Town Whentrop Board of Ordinances titled Section 2.50, Inspeccional Service Department. I'm going to read it until somebody says we're going to stop, but it's what you have been published, and it has been amended.
Would you like to have a motion to waive the reading?
I think, I think we, as host of the meeting, would vote.
Open your water fire, see what you want to hear.
All right. It starts, as I said, Section 2.50, Inspeccional Service Department. The first section is 2.50.010. It states, "The Inspeccional Services Department, ISD, is comprised of five regulatory divisions whose aim is to protect and improve the quality of life for all Whentrop residents by effectively administering and enforcing building, housing, health, sanitation, and safety regulations mandated by municipal and state governments." The next section is 2.50.020, and that is Commissioner of Inspeccional Services, who will be responsible for overlooking the Deputy Commissioner of Inspeccional Services and Health, local building inspector, rental housing inspector, plumbing and electrical inspectors, weights and measures, and trash dumpster enforcement. Responsibilities will include, will not be limited to the following: enforcement of Mass State Building Code, State Sanitation Code, handicap access regulations, local zoning ordinances, and conduct, and conduct general inspections in the interest of protecting the public. The department's direct reports will be responsible for the appropriate enforcement and interpretation of zoning ordinances, including but not limited to the following: Section 2.20, Board of Health Regulations; Section 2.52, Inspector of Gas piping and Appliances; Section 4.04.60, Board of Health Fees, Building Electrical Gas and Plumbing Fees; Section 5.04, Alcoholic Beverage License and Regulations; Section 5.12, Coin-Operated Laundries; 5.20, Massage and Bath Establishments; 6.04, Animal Control Code; 8.04, Embrace of Blasting, Cemeteries, Smoking, Tobacco Products, Tanning Devices. Adding in here is the new amendment. It's 8.34. You could write it in on your copies. Relating and stimulating, regulating and stimulating the rehabilitation of vacant buildings. That's 8.34. Also added in there on the printed copy is 8.40, Rental Property Registration and Inspection. And we go to 10.02, Signs; 12.24, Miscellaneous Street and Sidewalk Regulations; 12.36, Beaches. And we add onto your printed copies 13.10, Grease Traps; 13.12, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Recycling Dumpster; and 17.04, Zoning District, Uses permitted in Conversation District. That's supposed to be Conservation.
Conservation, yeah.
17.16, Dimensional Regulations; 17.24.02, Environmental Performance, Environmental Design Review by Planning Board; 17.28, Non-Controlling Uses; 17.32, Signs, Swimming Pools; 17.40, Flood Hazard Control Regulations; 17.44, Site Plan Review; and 17.48, Special District Overlay Design. Now add into there on your written copy 17.49, Bed and Breakfast. That was left out of the original. And then 17.52.070, Certificates of Occupancy and All Other Applicable Laws, Regulations as may be applicable to the offices described herein. Section 2.50.03, Deputy Commissioner. Professional Administrative Technical Inspection, Inspection Work in Planning, Managing, and Promoting the Town's Public Health Program in Enforcing Public Health, Sanitation, and Environmental Laws and Regulations. All Other Related Work is Required to Perform Administrative Supervisory Inspections, Investigative Work Related to the Enforcement and Interpretation of the Mass State Building Code, Local Zoning Bylaws, Applicable Regulations, Rules, and Statutes. Supervise and/or Inspect Buildings, Heating Systems, and Foundations During and After Construction for Structural Quality, General Safety, and Compliance to Specifications and Codes.
Excuse me one second. If we go back to up two lines, that says statutes. Should it be statutes?
Statutes. Statutes.
Okay, sorry.
Supervise and/or Inspect Building Heating Systems. We did that, okay. Review and Interpret Plans, Blueprints, Site Layouts, Specifications, and Construction Methods to Ensure Compliance to Legal Requirements and Safety Regulations. Review Plans for Building Construction or Alteration to Determine Compliance with State Codes, Local Zoning Bylaws, and Other Applicable Regulations. Answer Zoning Questions from the Public. Receives and Investigates Zoning Complaints. Review of Each Agenda Item for Board Consideration. May be Required to Attend Board of Appeals Meetings. Writes Zoning Enforcement Letters Establishing Deadlines and Fines. Enforces the Board of Appeals Decisions, Special Permits and Variances, and Reviews and Recommends New Zoning Bylaws. Works with Property Owners, Contractors, Architects, Tradesmen, Permit Applicants, and Others to Achieve Required Compliance with Applicable Laws, Bylaws, Regulations, and Codes Within the Jurisdiction of the Building Department. Explains Procedures and Assists Applicants in Completing Required Forms. Inspects and Monitors Construction Sites to Ensure Adherence to Safety Standards, Building Codes, and Specifications. Measure Dimensions and Verify Level Alignment and Elevation of Structures and Fixtures to Ensure Compliance to Building Plans and Codes. Issue Violation Notices and Stop Work Orders. Confirm When Owners, Violators, and Authorities to Explain Regulations and Recommend Rectifications. Issue Permits for Construction, Relocation, Demolition, and Occupancy. Approve and Sign Plans That Meet Required Specifications. Ability to Enforce the Regulations Firmly and Deal Appropriately with the Public. The next section is 2.5004, which is the Local Building Inspector. The Building Inspector who will assist the Commissioner in Administrative Supervisory and Inspection Work Related to the Enforcement and Interpretation of the State Building Codes Governing Buildings, Electrical, Plumbing, and Gas Standards, Local Zoning Bylaws, and Other Applicable Regulations. Responsibilities and Duties Include, but not limited to: reviewing building permit applications for compliance with codes and bylaws; conduct site inspections; issue building permits and certificates of occupancy and determines and collects related fees; reviews all new subdivision and commercial development proposals; inspects buildings and alterations to buildings under construction and upon completion to monitor compliance with the State Building Codes, zoning bylaws, and other state and local regulations; inspects the safety conditions of existing buildings; reviews plans for building, construction, or alteration to determine compliance with state codes, local zoning bylaws, and other applicable regulations; answers zoning questions from the public; receives and investigates zoning complaints; reviews all Board of Appeals applications for accuracy and completeness, and prepares review of each agenda item for board consideration. May be Required, again, to attend Board of Appeals Meetings. Writes zoning enforcement letters establishing deadlines and fines; enforces Board of Appeals Decisions, Special Permits and Variances; and reviews and recommends new zoning bylaws. Works with property owners, contractors, architects, tradesmen, permit applicants, and others to achieve required compliance with applicable laws, bylaws, regulations, and codes within the jurisdiction of the Building Department. Explains Procedures and assists applicants in completing required forms. The next section, Section 2.50.05, is the Rental Housing Inspector. He enforces state and local building code, public health and environmental laws, rules and regulations. Investigates and reports cases of diseases dangerous to the public health. Investigates and reports on issuances of complaints pertaining to the building code. Develops and implements plans for preventive and environmental health programs and solid waste management. Responsible for building code and sanitary code licensing. Inspection and Enforcement of Recreational Centers and Daycare Facilities for Children, bathing beaches, food establishments, housing, swimming pools, massage and bath establishments, body art establishments, tanning facilities, hotels and motels, funeral piles and interments, embrace of blasting, solid waste dumpsters, and tobacco control. Approves and issues all health-related licenses and permits, bathing and recreational areas. Inspects dumpsters and responds to complaints. Responsible for other inspections as assigned, including licensing, inspection, and enforcement of businesses that store hazardous material, and implementing, maintaining, and retaining of records, policies, plans, and procedures. The next section is 2.5006, and that is the Plumbing Inspector. Issues plumbing and gas permits to licensed plumbers for work to be performed in residential and commercial settings, and makes required inspections of work to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal codes, regulations, and laws. Collects fees and maintains departmental records. Maintains and makes repair of various plumbing and heating equipment at town-owned, non-school public buildings. Provides supervision to assistant inspector as needed, and performs various duties as directed. Referenced background, and this is, Massachusetts Jurnements license with a minimum of five years' related experience and computer skills desirable. Next section is 2.50.07. That is the Electrical Inspector. The Electrical Inspector performs a variety of electrical inspection duties at various stages of construction, alteration, and development. Ensures compliance with electrical codes, ordinances, and statutes. Maintains records of inspections and provides electrical code information to the public. City staff, contractors, and architects. This is a full journey level within the electrical inspector's series. Employees perform the full range of duties as assigned. I receive only occasional instruction or assistance as newer unusual situations arise and are fully aware of the operating procedures and policies of the work given. The next section is 2.50.08, which is Trash Dumpster Enforcement. Person there enforces the local trash ordinance 13.20 and ensures compliance. He performs annual inspections on all local businesses and multifamily families that require dumpster permits. The next section is 2.50.09, which is Weight and Measures. The Division of Standards is responsible for enforcing the accuracy requirements and other standards related to weighing and measuring devices and their use in the sale of food, fuels, and... Fuels, and Other Products. It Regulates the Seal of Gasoline and Sets Standards for Lubricating Oils, Antifreeze, Including the Inspection of All Fuel Dispensing Equipment. It Determines the Standards for Accuracy of Clinical Glass Thermometers, Tests and Improves Coin-Operated Devices, Licenses, Auctioneers, Transient Vendors, Peddlers, Motor Fuel and Oil Retailers, and Registers Auto Damage Repair Shops. The Division Also Enforces the Item Pricing Law and the Unit Pricing Regulations, and Oversees Grants to Support Item Pricing Inspections and Scan Accuracy in Retail Stores. And that is your sense. And that is our new Inspection Service Department, once we pass this motion.
Can you repeat that? I think I missed part of that.
Yeah, Russ was finished.
Coming from committee, it doesn’t require a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Not.
Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it’s unanimous. This is a huge, huge step forward in that forceful of our rental ordinance program, and I appreciate all the work over the last year that the chief, manager, and the council did to get this ordinance passed first, written and passed, and now to have the tools to enforce it. Thank you all. Motion to Discuss Senior Recipients of the Town Parking, that was Councilor Mail, who’s not here this evening due to his pessle. Motion to Draft a Letter to the Supreme Court is still on hold, I believe, Rich?
So I guess the question, it was actually, it was a motion to draft a letter to the Supreme Court in support of the referendum that Mr. Barrow had talked about, you know, to appeal the gambling. And it was actually, it was seconded by Councilor Mail, and actually, Council Verone and I, we had talked about actually sending it to council, as you had kind of reflected there about the negotiating teams, to find out what their opinion is, would it affect mitigation? And I had asked that that be made public, what the decision was about the council. That was kind of where we’re at. So I don’t know if we’ve had any feedback from our council yet.
We haven’t, and we probably should keep it on hold. We could table it, or we could keep it on postponing it.
How do, I guess, I’m just not sure, how do you, how do we get the opinion from our council so that we can make it, you know, whether we’re going to submit it or not, I guess, is what I’d like to, you know, what their opinion of, would it harm us?
We can check with them. Yeah, we’ll check with them before the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to Winter Waterways, you ready to read again, Councilor?
You will just change on this one. I could, if you will, in ordinance committee. That is presenting a motion that we approve the printed Town of Winthrop Waterways and Public Landing Rules and Regulations as printed. Now, the reason why this doesn’t have to be written in its entirety is it’s not a bylaw. This is just a policy and rules and regulations, but not a change in any of our town bylaws.
Are you sure you don’t want to read it?
No, I don’t want to read it because it’s 20 pages, not just the four of the other.
Coming.
But, but there are changes that are happening.
Yes, okay, yep.
So has everybody had this in front of them that was sent to them in the drop box? They do?
It’s in the drop box, or it was part of the?
I think it was also part of the agenda. I think it was in both places.
It’s in the agenda, it’s back in the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
We had a change on Section 11 and 20, isn’t it?
Wait a minute, we had to change Section 9. Section 9 is printed, cross out the entire Section 9. And in place thereof, you got the new notes from Joe Meltalto, I’ll read it though. The Owner of Every Vessel as Defined in the General Laws, Chapter 60B, Section 1, habitually moored and docked in waters of the Town of Winthrop shall display an Excise sticker on the port transom as proof of payment to the Town of Excise Tax on boats provided by Chapter 60B. The vessel shall also display on the port bow a Town of Winthrop Waterway decal issued annually by the Town. Such decal shall be affixed approximately 18 inches from the stem and 4 inches from the gunnel. These stickers shall be displayed so as to be clearly visible for inspection by the harbor master. Okay? Everybody have that? And if you don’t have it, there was another note that came out, amending it because it was placed in the original motion was wrong.
Okay, so 9 is gone and replaced with that?
9 is gone and replaced with that, and we’ll have that printed. Section 20, Section 6, Paragraph 20. States that people who are at the marina will notify the harbor master’s office of any suspected, this is the changes, unlicensed or unpermitted vendors/solicitors or strangers on the marina floats. All vendors must display their Town of Winthrop license or a permit issued by the town manager. Okay, that’s the change in 20. And in Section 11 is deleted in its entirety. And the committee still moves if these rules and regulations be passed that way.
I’m sorry, what was deleted altogether? Section 11?
Section 11.
Okay.
No, it’s not even in here.
Okay. Motion, Councilor?
Motion by committee. To adopt, as amended, the Winthrop Waterway Rules and Regulations.
Coming out of committee, there’s no requirement for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Counselor. Counselor Mail has not been able to come tonight. He had asked to add to the discussion, and I would respectfully ask the council to wait in the next meeting if it’s possible.
Is that a motion to postpone to the next meeting?
Yes, motion so Councilor Mail can weigh in on this.
Motion by Council Verone to postpone to the next meeting? Seconded by Council Sanford. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Just a concern, I mean, this is not the first time this has come up. And I believe this starts May 1st, so I don’t know if we, they need this in place by May 1st, so I don’t think we can postpone.
Would it be appropriate to vote it tonight, and then next week have a motion for an amendment to it?
We can always amend it. We can always amend them.
So in that case, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn by Council Verone, and the second has been withdrawn by Council Sanford, Council Delento.
There’s one change to the existing bylaws that, I mean, regulations, that wasn’t amended, that’s in the package, that I want to point out to people because it’s changing language from the existing old one. And that is in Section 5.9, that reads, “The discharge of oil, sewage, garbage, rubbish, or other debris for boats on the Winthrop Waterways is prohibited.” We’re going to add the language, “Valves are permitted. The discharge of sewage overboard from marine toilets or holding tanks must be securely locked.” So that is one addition that didn’t require amendment.
Yeah.
It was in there.
It did, yeah.
Okay, so we are now on the main motion, which has been submitted from committee, doesn’t require a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it’s unanimous. Is there any further, old business? If not, on the new business, Commonwealth and Town Settlements. Mr. McKenna, would you give us the?
Yes, I would ask that that be referred to Rules and Ordinances, please, for further... Well, you know, I would prefer it to be reviewed by committee. I entirely endorse the matter as a final settlement.
It looks like we had three attorneys that were representing us on it, a couple minutes paid.
A lot of work went into this, as you can see. It was a very sensitive matter regarding a property at Donovan’s Beach, and reclarification of delineation of town property, and the delineation of private property. So when titans were affected, you know, it’s certainly important to the applicant here, you know, that this get clarified because it was a flaw in their title. And the town needed to be assured that it had adequate research done to protect the town’s interests because Donovan’s Beach is a critical resource for the town. It is a draining point for our Inglesey Park and all the infrastructure that we’ve just installed, and it’s been there for years. So it’s important that we understand that, you know, our interest is protected as anyone else’s. So there’s been agreement for judgment here that’s been entered into for clarification of title, and, you know, I endorse the agreement. If you don’t feel it needs to go to committee and take the council’s recommendation on it, I certainly would ask for endorsement by the council to vote in favor of the agreement and allow us to move the matter forward with the attorneys to complete the matter.
I have a recommendation from the chairman of the Rules and Ordinances. Do you think it should be referred, or should we go ahead with it?
Yeah, I’ve read it, and, you know, we have three attorneys, John Golden Rosen, Elizabeth Lane, and Jonathan Eichmann, who have all drafted this, signed off on it, and I don’t think a review by our three committees of this would come up with anything different.
So you feel comfortable?
It’s history learned townhouses, so I think we could probably just vote on it.
Do we need to have an open, a public hearing first, or if not, we’ll just go ahead and vote on it right now?
No, it’s just an agreement for judgment, it’s not...
The motion that the town council, what would the motion be?
Adopt the agreement for judgment as presented.
Okay, the town council to adopt the motion as presented.
Adopt the agreement.
Agreement for judgment, I’m sorry.
Adopt the agreement for judgment presented by Arizona versus Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
You got that, Denise?
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion?
I’ll make the motion.
Motion by council. Del Fato, seconded by?
Second.
Council LeTiri. Any discussion on the motion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It’s unanimous, thank you. Transfer, from the sewer. The town council authorized the use of sewer retained earnings in the amount of $73,800 to purchase a 2014 JCB 2CX backhoe loader to replace the 1997 JCB loader. All it has exceeded its useful life and requires extensive repairs. Do I have a motion?
That would, to be referred, it’s got to be advertised, so, yeah.
So can I have a motion referred to finance? By, motion by council, motion by Council LeTiri, seconded by Council Verone.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair Finance, I’d ask, unless there’s any opposition, that this be advertised prior to, for vote on our next meeting?
Advertised for public hearing at our next meeting. Can you do that? Okay. And you’ll, before that, you’ll have a meeting, right?
Sure.
And you’ll have a report back. Okay, very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It’s unanimous, thank you. Transfer, Placeded. Yes. A motion that the town council established a special revenue revolving account entitled a Placeded Maintenance and Improvements Fund in accordance with the provision in Chapter 68 of the Special Act of the General Court in the year of 1917. This area is commonly known as the town-owned space property surrounding the following streets, across Veterans River, Payson, and Main Streets. Further, the purpose of this fund should be to hold and disperse all rental funds and other revenue earned by the usage and charges of this property, and that such funds should be used solely for the benefit of improvements of maintenance thereto, and any additional remaining fund balance should be carried forward year to year. Do you have comments on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we understand that, you know, we’re in receipt of revenue from a negotiated agreement for lease of the golf course, and there, when the golf course was established, the conditions for that required that any rental proceeds be retained for the use and improvement of the property called the Placeded Area. That’s by virtue of the transfer of the interest from the original owners to the town. And this is just in keeping with that intent, that we retain, create a fund that retains those funds, and that we use the funds according to the instructions of that gift to the town. And so...
What that basically is doing, establishing a fund where we put the money instead of putting it into the general fund?
Right, we can’t, right, we can’t let it go to the general fund. We have to use it for the purpose of maintaining or improving the property. That includes, it’s quite a bit of property, it’s not just the golf course. It’s beyond the golf course. It’s areas adjacent to the golf course. It could be Miller Field, it could be Veterans Field, any of those areas.
Questions?
Yeah, just a question, that why after all of these 200 years is it important to do this now, and is it only one tenant that we have there? I’m sure this area includes the Little League Park, Miller Field, the swale in between.
Or the swale.
We have no other tenant, so you only intend on whatever rent we get from the golf book to go into this?
We are now receiving more than a modest amount of rent for the golf course. And that now, you know, requires that we set up this fund and direct these funds to serve the purpose for which they’re intended, which is to make improvements in this property. Before, we weren’t receiving much funds at all, and so really didn’t require the council to do anything at this level. But now we want to follow the rules of why we took ownership of that property and be, you know, in keeping with the instructions of that gift.
Okay, counsel, just one question. If you intend to get this, use this money from the golf course, are you going to intend to use it for the Little League fields, Miller Field, or will you be holding this to use for improvements around the golf course?
That is, that is a decision of the council.
Okay.
You decide how the money is to be spent. I recommend how it should be spent, but I can tell you, we have more needs than money, and probably will always have more needs than funds. The most glaring of needs is the drainage swale problem that we have on Veterans Road, which I hope that these funds will help to assist us in addressing. That is our first and critical need.
Any further questions for the mic?
Yes.
Do we have to notify the school committee to do maybe a, some type of lease on the, on Miller Field so that gate receipts aren’t included? Is there any special provision?
I’d like to not get into that discussion tonight. All I know is that I’ve now been made aware through our lease negotiations of the fact that revenues dedicated from the golf course need to go back to the Placeded Area. The issue of, you know, leasing the fields and getting revenues from that, you know, could be a matter of how we’ve transferred custody of that field over to the school committee for many years, and requires some research of its own.
I mean, that can be, it can be administratively handled, I’m not certain.
Any further questions?
Where is the motion going?
Well, I’m going to ask for motion. That the town council, well, the motion that I just read, but, so if I can have a motion, I will reread it. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion?
Motion for...
Motion by council. Motion to refer to whom?
Motion to refer to rules.
You sure not finance?
I think it should be referred to both.
I think it should be referred to both.
Rules and finance.
Motion to refer to rules and to finance for a joint decision. How’s that? That was a motion by Council LeTiri, seconded by Council Boncori.
Boncor.
Council, Verone and Boncori, no, we won’t get into that. Seconded by Council of Boncori.
Yes.
Refer to rules and to finance for a joint decision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who said no? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It’s unanimous. I move the town council authorized the use of water retained earnings in the amount of $147,000 to engage the services of Woodward and Curran to complete the engineering design and bid specifications for Contract 4 of the Water Replacement Project in Cottage Hill and Pico Ave areas. Do I have a motion?
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion by Council LeTiri to refer to finance, the person is second.
Second.
Seconded by Council Sanford. All those in favor say aye.
I would ask that the same advertisement...
Okay, and so we’ll advertise that prior to the next meeting. Is Paul still here? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It’s unanimous, thank you. It's unanimous, thank you. We'll skip this fire department one. Transfer for the fire department. I move that the town council authorize the down payment of fifteen thousand dollars towards the lease purchase of a two oh one four Chevy Tahoe for the fire department. Funding will come from fund five eighty-three FEMA slash MEMA. Total cost of the Tahoe will be forty-two thousand dollars. The remaining balance of twenty-seven thousand will be funded in fiscal year fifteen and fiscal year sixteen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance.
Okay.
Do we need a hearing on that?
No.
Right, because it's only fifteen, okay. All those in favor of referring to finance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Transfer, I move to town transfer twenty-eight thousand forty-six dollars from the general stabilization fund, account number nine three two three five nine zero 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 to the town manager contracts services. Zero one 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 two five two five four four three five oh for Woods Hole Group to assist the town with its appeal to FEMA flood insurance rate map. That is the flood lane map. Take any action relative thereto. Motion?
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer by counsel LeTiri, seconded by...
What's the question?
Twenty-eight. Can't advertise it, right. Motion by counsel LeTiri, seconded by...
Me, I'm short of branch.
By Rich, counsel Boyajin.
And advertise.
And advertise. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I have appointment of Denise Mahoney to the board of registrar of voters as a reappointment for a second term. And I will reappoint her, I just need affirmation from the council.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by counsel Boncori, seconded by counsel LeTiri. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Under new business, I'm going to schedule, actually, I'm going to read a statement so I don't make a mistake. Regarding the discussions on Mohegan Sun, our discussions with Mohegan Sun continue. They are focused on conducting fact finding so that we identify areas of common ground and areas where there are differences we need to bridge. We share the goal of using this process to find a fair and reasonable settlement, and are focused on trying to achieve that. I will update the council and the town when this process yields a result. We, the process for mitigation negotiations ends on the twenty-third, the twenty-second. The twenty-second is a week from today. We have a meeting with Mohegan Sun scheduled for Thursday of this week. We also have put in a request, and it's now public record, to the Mass Gaming Commission to extend from the twenty-second of April to the first of May. We feel that that will probably happen, but we technically won't know for sure until Thursday at noon time. They have their meeting Thursday morning. So, given that, there is a possibility that we will need to have either a negotiated agreement by the twenty-second or a statement that we don't have one. Given that scenario, I'm going to schedule a special meeting for this Friday, the eighteenth, at seven PM, a special meeting for Saturday, the nineteenth, at two PM, and a special meeting for Monday, the twenty-first, at seven PM. And the agenda will say surrounding community agreement. A Mohegan surrounding community, just surrounding community. The rationale for doing that, I need to have forty-eight hours notice for posting. So, we're going to post all three. And if we get granted an extension until May second, not May first, we will cancel all three and then reschedule for the following week. So, that's an update on the process. The process is that five days after the deadline, we will enter into arbitration. In that five-day period, both parties, each party will choose an arbitrator. Both parties will choose an arbitrator. If they can't decide who the arbitrator will be, then each party will choose an arbitrator. And those two arbitrators will choose a third. If those two arbitrators can't choose a third, then the gaming commission chooses the third. So, it's a very structured, if we get an extension to the first of May, all of the other dates move forward proportional accordingly. Is that confusing? So, what I'm, what I'm just saying now is that we will, that I am going to schedule a meeting for Friday, the eighteenth, at seven, Saturday, the nineteenth, at two, and Monday, the twenty-first, at seven. We may meet all or none of those, or all, some, or none. Here's counsel.
Counsel president, I would ask that Friday, being Good Friday, that we move that up to six o'clock if we could. The Easter vigil starts...
Starts at seven thirty. You're right. It's fine. The other, Monday, the holiday is okay. I already cleared that.
Yeah.
The other conflict on the seven is counselor mail is tied up in religion until six, until seven. So, can we do six thirty? The, the Easter vigil at St. John's is seven thirty, correct?
Yes, I have to be there.
Okay, so could we do six forty-five? I assume it'll be a quick...
Yes.
If, if we have an agreement, I guess my plan is if we have an agreement and we meet on Friday night, I think the counselors should have the opportunity to, any one counselor to postpone it to the next meeting. And what that would do is we would have it publicly in our hands on Friday and have until Monday to do the vote. So, we'll make Friday at six forty-five? Okay?
Thank you.
So, that's the, the schedule for that. You got those, you got those three?
Friday at six forty-five.
Friday at six forty-five, Saturday at two, Monday at seven. And they'll all be here?
Is that going to be here?
Yeah. I'm ninety, I'm ninety-nine percent sure there was nothing on the calendar for any of those when I checked using this room, but if you could just check Denise, make sure.
Yep, I won't be here on the Saturday, just to let you know.
Okay. And if we can post all three of those?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. Anything else under new business? Counsel?
Tonight being the one-year anniversary of the horrendous incident that happened at the Boston Marathon, something did happen on April nineteenth of last year, and that was the capture of one of the culprits, I won't even call them a suspect. And we actually had some folks from Winthrop participated. Detective Callan and Lieutenant Perrin responded with the shooting of Officer Sean Collier and assisted in the search in Watertown. And we're in Watertown, actually, when the arrest was made. So, we never really paid, it was kind of a very hectic time for everybody in the town and in the region, but we, I'd like to give those two guys a citation. I mean, we, it's a small little town, but we, we have folks that go on the gang task force, that go in group task force. And we respond everywhere. It's not just little Mayberry by the Sea, as I sometimes call it. We're in a, we're in a region that a lot of our public service officials and public safety officers respond to things regionally, be it the hazmat team or whatever. But I'd like to, if everybody remembers the time, you know, we were locked down, the city of Boston was shut down, locked down, and they were out there doing what needed to be done. So, if we could have a citation for the next week.
You want to make this a form of motion?
Yeah.
Seconded by counsel. Okay, and we'll invite those two gentlemen to come to our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay? Not our next special meeting, our next regular meeting. Excuse me. Yes, counsel?
So, I did actually want to make, well, two motions, I think it would probably be, but I move that the town council submit a DVD of the Mohegan Sun town meeting on April first in its entirety to the Mass Gaming Commission in order that the citizens of Winthrop's voices are heard and factored into any decision in gaming licenses. That would be one motion.
Let's do one at a time. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by counsel Boncori. Any discussion on the motion?
When I made the motion originally last time, it was my intent to, that it go so that the council knew what the people of Winthrop wanted to say.
Right.
So, I full gladly supported that this time that we do that.
Could I?
You know, I thought it was put in, as you read the tape, but I didn't see...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you're, you know...
Yeah, so that was the initial intent of the motion I made.
The motion has been made and seconded, and, and I would just like to make it clear that there is not a date certain that it be, that it be submitted, because I want to make, I want to make sure it doesn't interfere with our negotiating...
Actually, the twenty-second, yeah.
So, as long as there's not a date certain, then I will move the motion forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Counsel Boyajin?
Sure, so the second, and a follow-up to that, is I do move that the town council submit the letter drafted by the unanimous vote of the planning board to the Mass Gaming Commission to be factored into the decision on gaming license.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by counsel Callan. Discussion?
Discussion.
Counsel?
Once again, in the same vein as the motion to the Supreme Court, I'd like to err on the side of caution when it comes with respect to our negotiating status. And I think that they probably already have a copy. If a citizen has, I think coming from a citizen, they will still get the information. Coming from the council, it may undercut our negotiating position. So, therefore, I would use my prerogative to put that off.
So, there's no discussion if he wants to put it off. However, I guess, I guess I can allow... Discussion. Nick, you've got it.
I'm trying to pull, I've been having trouble to getting it. We just got the new agendas for the next two MGC meetings.
I have copies.
Yeah, mine won't load, it loaded at the house. And I believe that the May first meeting that they have is going to be discussing, is input. So, I think that that would be per se the timeframe, the format for them to get it. Unfortunately, I can't, I can't get the...
There's one on the seven, or no?
Seventeen, it was, it would be on the agenda for the first. And, you know, so there's opportunity for it to be delivered to them. There's parameters for testimony and delivering of information from different groups and different citizens to get it there. So, if anybody wanted to get it there, that's fine. I don't see...
To continue the discussion, in all due respect, in case you change your mind, counsel of Barone.
So, I guess, you know, when we're talking about, this is a public domain document that's already, you know, that supposedly that's already out there. If, we'd kind of be insane if we don't think Mohegan Sun is kind of, you know, hanging on what we're doing. I mean, I'm sure they have a copy of this now. I don't see how suppressing the voices of, you know, of other citizens to the gaming commission and us not, you know, sending it in there, I don't see how that's going to hurt, you know, by sending it in.
Point of information. I'm deadly opposed to this letter, and I think this letter should be asked to be withdrawn to the planning board, because it's not from the citizens. This is from a town body. A town body should not be making any kind of decision or vote other than this town council. It's our prerogative, and our prerogative only, to vote whether this town is in favor or opposed to that casino. The planning board had no business taking a vote in the name of the town. If they wanted to do it individually, they could have done it individually at our meeting on the first. But that letter was completely out of line. I mean, our police chief got up and made his statement at the meeting, our fire chief got up and made his statement at the meeting. They were individual statements, even though they were from a public safety point of view, they were from a fire chief's point of view. But that vote says the town of Winthrop, not the individual members, and it should not have been done. It's our prerogative as a council to vote yes or no on the casino and not the planning boards.
Certainly, I concur.
Excuse me. The council doesn't have the right to vote yes or no on the casino. But this...
And what we're going to do with the casino position about the casino.
Right. However, with all due respect, the planning board has not, has not put that out as a position of the town.
What a position?
Hold on, hold on.
They put it as their position.
Let me, let me finish and then I'll, if I need to pass the gavel. The planning board has put this out as a planning board issue, not as a town, not as a town council issue, not as a town of Winthrop issue. So, I have to respectfully disagree that I believe as a, as a board, that the planning board has the right and according to what they've written, the responsibility in their opinion. So, I respectfully disagree that, that we don't have a right and we don't have the obligation to overrule the planning board on their, on their decision to do this. Now, whether or not, I think if the council sends it, then that is the council saying it's, it's a council handshake or recommendation. But at this point, I believe that we, we cannot, it's a public record that any citizen can put in there as of right now, as of eight, nine o'clock last night. Whether or not a citizen would do it, I don't know. Whether or not the council wants to then take this and do the same thing. If the council wanted to take this letter and say, yes, this is the opinion of the council, and I would recommend if we do that, that it have the same parameter, that it not have a, that it not have a specific date that it be submitted until it's reviewed by our negotiating team.
Can I respond?
Yes, certainly.
I disagree.
I understand.
I think it absolutely is a town of government body that is making a statement and they're making an issue. I think the letter was articulate, wonderfully written. It addressed all our concerns that we already know about, that we've been meeting about for a year and a half, two years. Everything that's in that letter, we have discussed at one point or another with the professional negotiators that we have hired to do that. All of those issues were discussed on the first. You know, everybody knows that those are our issues. But to take those issues and make a public vote on them from a government body, committee, commission, or anything else is completely wrong. That's our prerogative and our prerogative only. And I'm just going to be upset.
Can I?
Even though I agree with everything they said in the letter, except whether or not we're for or against the casino. Those are our issues, and that's what we should be giving to our negotiators, the team that's going to be, you know, arguing the case. But it should not be voted on that they are for or against casino.
I don't think it says that they're for or against casino, but I'm sorry, I'm talking out of line.
Vice president? So, I guess I would, I would respectfully disagree that you're talking about almost two separate things. In, from my point of view, we're talking about letting the gaming commission know, which is judging on the licensing of them, and they should have that factored in on judging the licensing, not on the mitigation. I'm not talking about mitigation. I'm talking about they also have the right to figure that out as far as what the town's looking at. And at least, you know, you're right, maybe that the, maybe it should have been the council that actually took that vote and said this to the gaming commission, but that wasn't going to happen. So, maybe that sending this to the gaming commission saying, these are our concerns that you've said we've had for years, to let them know that it should be factored into the licensing, not the mitigation, but the licensing and whether or not they should get a license. So, I respectfully say that there's two separate issues, and not just concerning how much money we're going to get from the casino if we do, but also should they be there in the first places. That seems to be the nature of the letter, as far as there are grave concerns about the community and whether or not we should make that known to the gaming commission. You know, it doesn't sound like the council wants to do that, that's fine, but I think that that is something we should talk about and make known our wishes, that whether or not we think the gaming commission should have the right to see that.
Counsel? Just, this isn't an issue that started last night. On December third, we had a motion before us to send a letter to the gaming commission expressing our concerns. On December eighteenth, seventeenth, seventeen, that motion was tabled until after the vote. And the vote was taken on, help me, February fifth. And it was never brought back up again. But I just want to make it clear that this is no different from that motion that was tabled, so it's not, it's not a new issue. And, and we did not bring it back. It was never brought back off the table. But I just want to make it clear that, yes, that, that issue specifically spoke to a letter to be drafted by the town manager, I think. We might have changed it. But, but no, the final motion... But, no, the final motion was that a letter be sent to the Gaming Commission expressing the concerns of the council. This letter, if it expresses the concerns of the council, sort of goes back to the wish of that, and I guess it would be up to the council to determine whether or not this letter does affect, does reflect the concerns of the council. And if so, then, should it be submitted? However, we do still have on the table Counsel Barone's motion to.
I don't, I actually just said the town council should submit the letter. I'm not saying we should, you know, you know, I think that to make it known, I don't know that we have to take, if you want to be more specific about taking a stand supporting the letter or not, or, but as long as we're discussing things and making it known as counselors what our opinions are, and it's out there for the public record, people know what we support, what we don't, whether we're tabling things or not, and that's fine.
Counsel Barone.
Oh, okay, Counsel. My point in putting this off is the same point that I've made in the past. Let's get the opinion, and not to take away from Counsel of Boncory's well-reasoned, articulate argument about why subcommittee shouldn't do this. Coming from the council, it says quite a lot. We are sitting across the table from someone who we're telling, we want you to die, we want your proposal to die, that how can they, my thought, that I ask myself rhetorically, is how can they negotiate with us, you know, in good faith if we're telling them, we just want you to go away? Now, my feelings on the casino are the same as everyone else's. That's irrelevant. We're charged with negotiating in good faith with these people. And my assertion would be that let's just ask the opinion of our negotiator before we move forward with something like this. I agree with you, Counsel Gil, that there's no date, time certain. I just wanted to give us a little bit, we have plenty of time to send this or not send it. I would like to hear from counsel before we act on something. And to me, acting, and it may not necessarily be knee-jerk, but without all the relevant information, may not be a good idea. That's my point, that I just want to hear from our counsel.
Okay, so if I can just get it clear in my head, you are exercising your right to.
Yes, I am.
And not officially, but the reason is that you'd like to have us run a pack, counsel, to get there.
Yes, exactly.
Well, it's a table issue.
No, it's, we don't have to.
Counsel.
It doesn't have to. It's moved over to the next.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Really? It's only 9:35. I have to keep pushing it to Light It Up Blue Month for autism for my Riley. Back up to public comment, sorry. Yes, Carol.
I guess I'll just have to go on the record stating.
I'm sorry, just have to name and.
I'm sorry, Carol Ficella, precinct four. I have to go on the record stating that the timeliness of your actions are important. Counsel of Boncory, you said you've been talking about this for a year and a half. That's the problem. You've been talking, and nothing has come out of this council to state to that Gaming Commission how we feel, the voices of your citizens, and the impact on this community. I have not heard any of you articulate what is the benefit to Winthrop. I've heard you say the benefits to Revia. I still don't know what you believe to be the benefits to Winthrop, and you are being negligent in your responsibilities not to be the voice of this town and to take action. They're going to make decisions. Mitigation is different, is different than making a voice to that Mass Gaming Commission. They should know how we stand. Go ahead and mitigate, but the Gaming Commission should know where we stand on this. It's a big disappointment that you folks are not acting on this. The planning board had the guts and the courage to come forward. They wrote a project letter. Stand by that letter. It is not voting. It's not speaking for the people of Winthrop. They're speaking as a planning board, giving you advice and counsel from their perspective on the impact on this town. If you don't respect your boards, then you should abolish them, because you're acting as an oligarchy, where you're just a few making this decision for the entire town. Give your board some credit and some support.
Thank you, Carol. Any further public comment?
I can say something. To Jim, I'm not going to answer that, Carol, but we have, by sending that tape, we made the voice of the Winthrop people known to the Gaming Commission, okay? That tape alone makes the voice of the people, but it shouldn't be the voice of this town that's in negotiations, in executive sessions. Now, Jim, I have been taking walks through Winthrop, and I walked down to the golf course behind the Miller Field and up Veterans Road on the right-hand side, and it's a mess. So, I contacted Sheriff Ponck and asked him if he would send a crew down, and he said he would send a crew down twice a month to do that area, clean under the bleachers at Miller's Field, do the alleyway between the golf course and Miller's Field, and the whole right-hand side of Veterans Road, and anywhere else you want to put them. Terry was there. He talked to him as well, and he said that he could coordinate that they came to town, but he wanted you to call him as well.
Okay.
So, I'm asking you to call.
I appreciate you doing that. I know we discussed in our managers' meeting, having the sheriff's resources come to town and help us with a few things. So, thank you.
He's agreed to send him twice a month.
Great.
Thank you, Counsel. Just, we have to make sure that we don't step on the Conservation Commission's toes.
True.
Counsel.
So, I just want, the Planning Commission, unless there's a leak in our executive sessions, had no idea what we were talking about. This has come up on their own, so don't, it has nothing to do with the executive sessions or leaks and that. This was on their own fruition that they came up with this, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Ross.
I just like, because I was part of the.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm Robert Carroll, precinct four. Six.
Counsel, just one conversation, please.
I'm sorry, and again, just as a citizen who helped to kind of generate that letter with our wonderful sheriff, it's, again, we know nothing about mitigation and the conversations that are going on, because they are behind closed doors. All we hear is that it's not going well, and all I know is there's lots of nervousness in this town about how that process is going. So, as a board in town, whose basic mandate is to take care of the people in town in orders of development, and not just like dumpsters and a couple of parking spots in the center, we're thinking of, this is one of the biggest development impacts this will ever have on Winthrop could ever have. So, it's, you know, it's the airport, it's Deer Island, it's on that level. And so, the idea that we're waiting for a policy statement, waiting for a policy statement to come from this board, and it never happened. So, I think, I mean, I felt motivated to fill that vacuum with, you know, the skills of the people that I knew on that board to try to sort of write a policy statement that wasn't about the evils of gambling and how it's going to turn everybody into strippers or whatever. It's not about that. It's just, look, there's, there are traffic situations at these intersections. If you're talking about state improvements of highways, they need to be earmarked to these specific spots, you know, there's, and we just tried to go facts right down the line. So, I just, I just think it's a little offensive, again, as a town that has no town planner and no town planning department, and just volunteers and a board that are trying to do the right thing, that we've overstepped. I don't think we've overstepped. I think we filled a void that existed because of the lack, not probably because of your efforts, but from the lack of transparency of your efforts. We don't know what's going on. We assume the worst. So, I guess I'm trying to defend the planning board and myself as one of the co-conspirators in it, but I just, you know, I think we're all trying to sort of do the right thing. I don't want to undercut any, you know, cards we're trying to hide or whatever, but I just want to make sure, you know, people are aware of that list of factual elements that should be thought of during the negotiations. Thank you.
And just to back up on that, it didn't express an opposition. It expressed the concerns of what the effects of the casino could be. And I appreciate your efforts. All right, once more.
This is Al Buggi, actually, precinct six. I thank and agree with the counselor for making a motion that on those, both of those issues, well, the DVD and also on the planning board's piece, and I want to reiterate what he said, that these are two very different things. The Mass Gaming Commission is making a decision on the site of a casino. There are mitigation conversations going on at the same time. The Mass Gaming Commission has never, never heard from this town council on the record about the concerns of the citizens of Winthrop. Period. You might be having conversations behind closed doors or whatever with the mitigation crew. The Mass Gaming Commission has never heard from this town council about the concerns of the residents of Winthrop, which we think is your job. I understand that tonight, there was a comment made, and the DVD may or may not be going. I don't quite know what happened there, and there's something about it will go, but maybe that's a date, but we don't know. I don't want to get that. But at any rate, you know, I think that both of the things that were raised in the motion about the comments, the public comments, and the peaceful deal by the planning board provide information to the Gaming Commission on how to cite a casino, where to cite a casino, and what to consider. Period. Over here, there are these mitigation conversations going on. I don't understand why more information that's out of the public view venue to the Gaming Commission has any impact on the discussions around mitigation. And by the way, I agree, and thank you, President Gil, for clarifying this. The piece that was written by the planning board, I did read it, it doesn't say, don't come, and it doesn't say, we oppose it. It states concerns. So, I just, in terms of the mitigation conversations, you know, I don't see how any additional information about the concerns, about the concerns and impacts on the town of Winthrop can weaken the argument that more mitigation funds are needed. So, I just like to make those two comments, and which I hadn't planned to make before. I do want to say one other thing, which is, I very much appreciate the chief's comments on not revealing our hand before arbitration. I think what I'm struggling with a little bit is balancing that with also preparing the best case for arbitration, and that's why I had asked about when the studies would be done, when they get released, and in the interest of not trying to reveal the hands, that they have time to prepare their case back. I guess what I would ask is, can the study results, when they come from the traffic in the MABC studies, can those also be presented to, like, a small group of resident experts or someone to get input on? You know, I get the concern, you don't want to reveal it, but I'm looking for a way to kind of further prepare us for arbitration, which I assume we're going to head toward, because it doesn't seem as though an adequate amount of money can be generated. And the second question that goes along with that, and is really a follow-up on what Carol said earlier, and again just now, you appoint town boards for a reason. There's a town charter about what they do. You appoint them because of their experience and expertise. When we have any issue come up before the town, you should be going to the boards with their opinion. So, I would like to just hear, this is another way of not revealing just the results of studies. You know, can you, the Board of Health should be asked about their view of the impact on the casino, on the health concerns of the town. The Conservation Commission should be asked about their view on the effects on our fragile ecosystem in the waterfront. The, you know, Harbor Management Commission should be asked about, so what I'm asking is, will the town council ask all the relevant town boards, what in their judgment are the impacts on a potential casino development, all of which is added to your case with an arbitrator? And that's what the town boards are there for.
If, to consider what Al Buggi just said, would anybody, if any counsel want to go back to new business and make a motion to refer to each of the, for each of the committees to come up with a, I'm just asking, if nobody wants to do it, we don't have to do it.
Why not? They can come to us with their concerns at any time, but they should come to the council. They should write a letter saying, we reject.
That's what we're talking about.
Come to the council and then advise us, and then we make the decision whether to reject or not. Do you understand? They're advising to us, not sending a letter to the commission.
I'm not saying for, so, hold on. You're right. But we could ask them.
Yes.
To come to us with their input. I think that's.
Yeah, but we don't need a motion to do that. You can just call and ask them to come in.
Do you feel comfortable?
Absolutely.
I would, I would prefer, if we're going to do that, because there seems to be some concern about who's doing what, if we're going to ask each one of these committees to come, we're not demanding, ask them for their input, I would suggest that it be a vote of the council, we ask them to do it. Counsel Domeno.
Getting the input is great. What we have to remember is, we went through over a year of hearings, and we had people in, we had Chamber of Commerce, we had different groups in the public safety, schools. I don't remember which exact boards we had in. That information is all part of the negotiation. We already have a lot of that. We don't have one from the planning board until now, which is, which is fine, and they did a phenomenal job, and if this should somehow make it to them, to the Gaming Commission, so be it. But in reality, I'm looking at the agenda. The Gaming Commission, determine premise of gaming establishment is on their agenda for May 1st. They want all briefs and documentation, all testimony filed by April 17th. It's not possible to get the Board of Health or any of these groups in to do, to get opinion pieces in before April 17th.
Okay, I have to.
So, in reality, we have a lot, we have a lot of it. It's in our negotiations. It's in what we've been doing with them. As to getting it to the Gaming Commission, if this somehow makes it there, it is from the planning board. If it gets delivered to them, it gets delivered to them by any source, it's public. So, you know, what I'm saying is, I think, although we're chasing, we have to be sensitive of the timeframe, to be realistic of where we are.
Okay, and I do have to, I guess, I don't want to agree with, I do have to agree with what these people have said, that we did have a council casino committee that met probably 15 times, and I have to applaud the planning board that they took it upon themselves to do this, and I'm not, I'm not saying that the other boards didn't do their jobs, but I think we probably don't have time. However, I would be more than happy if any one of the other boards would write us a letter tomorrow with their concerns. Richard.
So, I mean, I just, it just seems farcical that we're, we're talking about, we have all this in our negotiations. We're not negotiating with the Mass Gaming Commission. And the other, the other point is, we're talking about, you know, Counsel Boncory said, we should be the ones representing, and we should be the ones that are making the decisions on that. Well, then, maybe we're the ones that should be reaching out to the different, these different committees, not waiting for them to reply to us, that we're the ones that are supposed to be running the show. So, and that would be my respect on that, and I did have one actual nice thing to say. I did want to, and maybe that's public comment or whatever, but I wanted to thank Kathy Gallagher-Hubert's CCD class for, again, two years in a row, raising an incredible amount of money for the life skills class at the high school.
Okay, we're through with public comment, and I'm just going to, on the public relations, I have to say Light It Up Blue, I have to say it all month, because my Riley is artistic, and we're lighting up the town blue for the month of April. April 26th, Judy Van Tumman is having her function over it called Uplift Yourself with Laughter. 26th, also up in the town hall, there is a POW MIA dedication at 11:00 in the morning. And on May 9th, the Police Explorer fundraiser that the chief outlined last week. Yes.
And if I may, Chamber of Commerce is hosting a $10,000 dinner raffle on Friday, May 26th, at the Cottage Park Yacht Club, 6:30 cocktails and auction, 8:00 dinner, and comedian Joey Carroll will be master of ceremonies. So, invite everybody to.
$10,000 dinner?
$10,000 dinner, yeah.
Can I just make a shout out? Shout out.
Is that a motion for German, Counsel?
It is, sir. I have two very bad babies that had birthdays. This one, happy birthday to Emma, which turns five, and happy birthday to Michael. Tomorrow's his birthday. He turns 14.
Happy birthday.
At our next meeting, we have a birthday too, so I'm not going to say who it is.
You have to get a cake.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Vice President Domeno, second advice. Counsel Sanford. Discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Can I get a swap?
Can I get a swap for you?